Well, good morning, good afternoon. Good afternoon. We're gonna get started. We have a pretty long witness list, so the sooner we get started, the sooner we can get done. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming down today. Some might say this is a relatively significant moment. Probably say that, too. I want to thank all the members, in particular, who have worked on this initiative for a long time, actually a former member, Councilman Good. Sitting over there, I remember, Councilman Good sponsored a number of bills on the tax abatement years ago. So this is not something that just happened to come up in the last moment, as some people are attempting to imply. Sorry, I had to take a shot. So hopefully, we'll have a thoughtful discussion today. We would like to hear all sides, as we do in the City Council of Philadelphia, and come up with a reasonable solution to an issue that continues to be hotly debated and somewhat controversial, hotly contested. At the end of the day, this council has been real good about being in a position to come up with what people believe to be the most reasonable approach to governing in the city of Philadelphia. So I want to thank you all so much. This is the hearing, it's called a order. I recognize the presence of a quorum of the committee, the whole. This is the public hearing on the committee. The purpose of this hearing is to take testimony on bills number 190943 and 190944. Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of the bills?
Bill 190943, Inordinance Amending Section 191301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to Increase the Amount of the Homestead Exclusion Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 190944, Inordinance Amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by Modifying the Duration and/or Amount of Certain Tax Abatements and by Providing for Periodic Evaluation of the Abatements Authorized by Sections 191303-2, 191303-3, and 191303-4, all under certain terms and conditions.
At this time, our first witnesses to testify on bill number 190943. Are we only doing testify on one bill or two? Testify on both bills. Right now, we have Mr. Rob DeBeau, City Finance Director, and Mr. Yuri Monson, the Chief Financial Officer for the School District of Philadelphia.
On 944.
And then next to you, okay, thank you. Good afternoon, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the City Council. Rob DeBeau, Finance Director, joined by Jim Engler, Chief of Staff to Mayor Kenny, and Ori Monson from the School District. I'm here to testify in opposition to bill number 190943. The legislation would raise the homestead exemption from the existing $45,000 to $50,000 starting for tax year '21. The homestead exemption is available to anyone who owns a property in Philadelphia for whom the property in question is their primary residence. As you know, the homestead was increased earlier this year from 40,000 to 45,000, and the earlier changes to the homestead were made in part to help offset increases in property assessments. The proposed increase in this bill is not coupled with any change in assessment and has substantial cost to the city's general fund and to the school district. The combined FY '21 cost to the city and the school district would be about $15.4 million with about $8.5 million of that cost being borne by the district. The district's five-year plan already assumes it will begin incurring deficits in FY '22, and this bill would exacerbate those deficits. Given the anticipated financial impact of the bill, we'd want any revisions to the homestead exemption to be weighed against other priorities as part of the FY '21 budget process and to be considered in the context of any change in assessed values. That concludes my testimony, and we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Monson.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of the committee. My name is Ori Monson, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the School District of Philadelphia. Here to explain the impact on the school district of the ordinances to amend the code regarding the homestead exclusion and regarding the city's real estate tax abatement program. I want to begin by briefly addressing the proposed increase in the homestead exemption. Last June, I testified regarding a similar bill to increase the exemption and noted the negative impact to the district of any such change as significant. We estimate the proposal here today would cost the district about $9,000,000 to $9,500,000 in '21, about $50 million over the life of our five-year plan. For perspective, $9,500,000 equivalent to the annual cost of 79 teacher salaries. Last year, the city was able to designate funds to keep the school district whole relative to the eventual change in the homestead exclusion that was adopted in June, and we would hope the city would take this same approach to any future changes to the homestead exemption. The proposed changes to the real estate tax abatement program would have a positive short-term impact on the school district's budget, allowing for the collection of revenues not currently received in years two to 10 of the 10-year tax abatement. In fiscal year '18, the district's revenues from real estate taxes were reduced by just over $61 million as a result of the current residential and commercial tax abatement programs. According to the research conducted by E-Consult on behalf of City Council, district would expect to realize an additional $148 million in revenues over the next 10 years if the proposed ordinance is passed. Recently, with the help of the mayor, this council, and through smart financial management, the school district has been able to return to fiscal stability, allowing for Moody's to upgrade the district to investment grade for the first time since 1977, and Fitch to upgrade the district two notches this past October. These additional funds would be the sustainable, recurring, predictable revenues on which the district relies in order to make investments in our students, staff, and schools. I think it's important to note that it will be crucial to continue to review the impacts of these amendments and the performance of the tax abatement program going forward on a routine basis. I was an Assistant Budget Director for the city when current abatement programs were first enacted over 20 years ago, and have used the city's taxation system through a variety of lenses over that period. The abatement program, like other incentive programs, TIFs, Kozes, exemptions are all exceptions to the tax code, which were presumably initiated to promote some type of economic activity in the city or correct for recognized disadvantage of the tax code. While it would take time to determine whether or not the amendments proposed in this ordinance will have an impact on construction and home improvement activity in Philadelphia, studies have shown we can expect some impact. It's always challenging to construct the "but-for" analysis, what would have happened under a different set of circumstances? Would greater funding improve the quality of our public schools, also potentially driving up real estate values regardless of any tax abatement? With the E-Consult study, a baseline has been established which should be utilized to evaluate the impact of these amendments and the tax abatement reconsidered in whole or in part within some defined period of time. This concludes my testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. You're in the next bill, right? Want to do it now?
It's up to you.
Hey, might as well.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is James Engler, Chief of Staff to Mayor Kenny. I am joined by Rob DeBeau, City Finance Director, and Ann Fadulen, Director of Planning and Development. I am here to testify on bill number 190944. This legislation would modify the existing 10-year real estate tax abatement for certain new construction, creating an annual 10% step-down scale over the course of 10 years. This change would be applied for initial abatement application submitted on or after July 1, 2020. Each year, each new abatement would step down an additional 10%, so that properties would have a 100% abatement in the first year, a 90% abatement in the second year, 80% in the third year, and so on. After the 10th and final year, the abatement would terminate. The abatement program was implemented to spur construction and development in the city and strengthen what was a very weak market. Numerous studies have shown the abatement program helped achieve that goal. Implementation of the abatement helped to drive investment and building production, including both new construction and rehabilitation. In turn, the abatement helped to strengthen the city's real estate market and boost the city's property tax base overall. Studies also note, however, that the market has changed since the abatement was first implemented, and we agree that the abatement is worth revisiting in light of these market changes. We also strongly support the requirement that the abatement be reevaluated every three years. Studies have also concluded that elimination or reduction of the existing abatement would lead to reduction in construction activity, which would be accompanied by a loss of development, employment, and related tax revenue over the long term. Over a 20- or 30-year period, the current abatement is projected to generate more development, create more jobs, and raise more tax revenue than scenarios to modify or decrease the incentive. In addition, outside studies also show short-term revenue gains following the reduction or elimination of the abatement. At some point, however, there is a crossover after which the city and school district begin to lose revenue. The Department of Revenue analyzed the proposed reduction scenario in this legislation and its likely impacts over the next 20 years, starting in 2021. This analysis found an anticipated short-term increase in real estate tax revenue, which is expected to peak at $56 million in 2030. After that peak, the increase is expected to decrease each year, leading to a loss of over $15 million in 2040. Over a 10-year period, this is expected to reduce construction volume by over 12,000 new properties as compared to the status quo. Over the 20-year period, the change in construction volume is expected to grow to a reduction of over 28,000 new properties. While we remain concerned about the loss of long-term revenue and the possible negative impacts the change would have on development, employment, and other city revenues, we understand the concerns of residents who view the current abatement structure as unfair. We support a change to the abatement with a percentage phased out over a period of years, but with a few caveats. First, we strongly believe that the legislated periodic evaluations be conducted jointly by City Council and the administration. Additionally, we have concerns that the effective date of July 1, 2020 could have significant negative impacts on the development projects currently in the final planning phases. We would respectfully request that the effective date be adjusted to July 1, 2021, to allow for both the city and developers to better plan for implementation of this change. That concludes my testimony, and we are available to answer any questions you may have.
Sorry, thank you very much for your testimony. I just have a couple of quick questions. Homestead, would you acknowledge that the homestead has been probably the most effective way to offset increasing numbers as it relates to existing residents and neighbors, to offset, in most cases, the increase in taxes based on new construction?
It has been...
I know that's a loaded question, but the reality, when you look at neighborhoods, you go to Francisville, you go to Burytown, you go to Point Breeze, these neighborhoods where there's been significant levels of 10-year tax-abated new construction, the property values on existing properties are going up dramatically, and I think that's why having homestead would be in support of, you know, mitigating any negative impacts of that to a degree. Would you acknowledge that?
I think the homestead has been valuable in offsetting increases in assessments, and it's been, those increases have been coupled with changes in assessments before. I mean, it's our most widely-used relief program, about 220,000 properties, so that has been one of the big benefits of the homestead, yes.
All right, and our ability to locally put in place measures that will allow us to support existing residents are quite limited, probably homestead, maybe one or two other small measures.
So there's homestead...
Because OPA is wanting to do what OPA has consistently done unless until we change it, but it's been problematic for a lot of residents.
There are a number of relief programs in addition to homestead. There's the Loop program, there are payment plans, which at the lowest income levels actually have zero payment options, so there are other relief programs, too.
But would you acknowledge that Loop has certain qualifiers, must have lived in a property for a certain period of time, income? Homestead is for everybody that owns and occupies a house.
For everybody...
So that's the most effective...
Right, regardless of income, regardless of anything else, so long as you own the property and live in it, you can get a homestead.
All right, okay, I just want to make sure. We on the same page on that? Ms. Engler, you referenced this figures over a period of time, you actually reference 2039 as a year where there will potentially be some negative impact on any changes, and I will say here today, I guarantee you, I will not be the council president in 2039. All right, so I know that might make a lot of people happy, they may want me to accelerate that date, but 2039, I'm not going to be the council president, all right? But over that same time period, until we get to 2039, we're looking at around $420 million in projected revenue going towards our schools and our city to help with services and existing homeowners and making sure our children live in a safe environment. Just want to acknowledge that.
Yes, and I think I acknowledge in the testimony, there are revenue gains in the short term, and I think that's what every study has shown.
Short term? Are you talking about from 2020 to 2038? Short term? When you say short term, I'm trying to understand what's short term.
So what I've referenced in there is where you get to the crossover point, which is what economists that have looked over that have said, where does the revenue crossover? Where do we see actually a reduction in revenue with a change? So if you were to continue the current abatement structure, you would see increased revenue. If you were to change it, how you would change it would increase revenue over a certain period of time. It could be 10 years, could be 20 years, depending on the type of change that you would implement, and you would see increased revenue. The question is, what happens after that? And what JLL, who looked at it two years ago, I guess it was now, a year and a half ago, found that there is a crossover point no matter what change you were to implement, where there'd actually be reduced revenue from the status quo. But I think also in the testimony, I note that we agree that it's fair to make a change to the abatement in light of the changing market conditions, and that we believe that the phased-out approach is a fair way to do that.
So we're looking at 2039, okay, I'll probably get away with that, all right. Okay, I'm going to limit my questions because we have a lot of individuals here to testify today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm. Councilwoman.
Thank you very much, Council President. So, Mr. Engler, I wanted to ask a little bit about the tax abatement as a program overall. Are you aware of any other city in the country that does a tax abatement similar to ours? In which case, it is 10 years of property taxes granted, not land value, blanket across the city with no income restrictions or caps or anything like that, and also, interestingly enough, not necessarily frozen, the tax abatement actually grows over time. So are you aware of any other program in the country that does something along those lines?
I'm not, I'm far from a subject matter expert on it, but Ann Fadulen, our Director of Planning and Development, is here, and if she can provide any expertise.
It's a pretty yes or no question, so. I don't want to bring up Ann for a long...
Oh, my favorite, my favorite. So the short answer to your question is no, but there are, so I don't have it at the tip of my tongue and on the top of my head, but a few years ago, we did kind of look at this and polled a bunch of cities. There are various types of tax abatements. In fact, you know, New York City has some of the most generous tax abatements, but they're usually tied to something else. The only place that we found that they did not have any kind of abatement was Boston. And when I said, you know, why is that, they basically said, because it was so difficult to build anything there and supply was so limited that they didn't need an abatement.
Interesting. And has the 10-year property tax abatement changed at all in the last 18 years plus of its existence?
So I don't believe it's changed in the last 18 years since this version was passed, right? Initially, it was a three-year, and it was only for rehab of the upper floors of commercial properties, and then I think it went to some kind of a five-year, and ultimately, this passed where it was a 10-year full abatement on any type of improvement.
So currently, there has not been any substantive changes to this tax subsidy program for almost two decades, in other words?
Correct, since this version passed, there has not been any changes to it.
And is that standard, I mean, tax subsidies can evolve and change?
Yeah, I can't, I don't know.
So one of the other questions I had is that if the Controller's report says about 6% of Philadelphia neighborhoods receive almost 60% of the benefits of the tax abatement, do you feel like this is a type of tax policy that is reflective of the city's efforts to move towards equity in terms of our use of development dollars, incentives, et cetera?
So I think in one hand, it's equitable because anybody can get it, right? So even our affordable housing developments get it. You know, when you do a tax credit deal, you actually buy, you have to have a for-profit entity, so even, for example, when the Housing Authority does a project, they have to do it as a for-profit entity, and they get a tax abatement. So in that respect, I think it's equitable, but I think kind of what's built in is, obviously, the higher the value of the property, the more that gets abated, right? So there is sort of this lean towards kind of properties with higher value getting a bigger benefit.
Yep, I think that map says a lot about how equitable it is, and I know that, especially for yourself, Ms. Fadulen, that you've been dedicated to seeing equity, and I think what we're looking for is equitable development, and the map doesn't show that. So whether it's intended to or not, the actual outcome, would you say is equitable?
You know, I think it's complicated, right? Which is why we're having the conversation today. So I think, you know, development is part of what's added to us having a stronger tax base, and then using that tax base to support more equitable programs is a very advantageous thing. However, you know, like I said, properties that have a higher value tend to get a bigger benefit from this type of incentive.
So, Mr. DeBeau, so one clarification about the tax abatement that I found really interesting is that, say if someone were to get the tax abatement in year one, and say the value of their house is $300,000, is it true that the tax abatement would actually grow? So for example, if property values grow over the next 10 years, they're entitled to a 10-year property tax abatement, they not only, they aren't just frozen in at the $300,000, they, the tax abatement actually grows and expands, is that accurate? I mean, they're taxed on the land value, I understand, but say if like the property value were to grow by 30% over 10 years, and it would then be valued at $420,000 by year 10, they are not responsible for taxes on the $120,000, they would get a property tax abatement for the full $420,000. Is that correct?
They only pay on the land, that's right.
They only pay on the land. So the tax abatement is actually something that grows expansively, it would have no limit or cap if the value or the properties, whereas other counties might say, hey, you got a $300,000 tax break, that's pretty good for the next 10 years.
I don't know how other counties do it, but that's correct. You're describing how it works here correctly.
We can agree, though, that no other municipality gives such a generous program as does ours, so whether or not they do...
I think the honest answer to that is, we just don't know, because we don't know what every single other municipality is doing. But I think your assessment of, if you buy a house at $330,000 and let's say the value of the land was 50, you get the 250 abated, and if the value of that house goes up to 300, that yes, you're technically, your abatement kind of grows because of the value. You don't get then re-taxed on that increased increment.
Thank you. So, Mr. Monson, could you talk a little bit about what the school district's facilities needs are right now? What is the actual, what had, a couple of years ago, the school district issued a report about urgent facilities needs within the school district. It was something in the billions of dollars, I think it was?
It's about $4.5 billion was that Facilities Condition Index. We're actually in the process of updating it for both for work we've done and obviously have, conditions have deteriorated, but the number we generally use is $4.5 billion.
And the 10-year property tax abatement impacts the school district how? How, what does, how is the school district impacted by the property tax abatement?
It reduces our real estate tax revenues by, for 2018, the last full year of data, $61 million a year.
$61 million a year?
Yes.
Okay. So $61 million is what the district might have lost as a result of this?
In a raw number, yes. Not accounting for the but-for argument of what economic activity would or would not have happened.
And the district has been doing a significant amount of work in the area of facilities. You recently announced an infrastructure investment of how much borrowing?
We completed a borrowing of $500 million, actually closed on it about three weeks ago.
And if we were to delay implementation of this tax abatement, would that put the district in a better or worse position financially? If the, if, if we were to, the proposal on the table is that the tax abatement would change as of July 1st. If we were to delay that, say, a year or so, would that put the district in a better or worse position?
It delays a year for when we would recoup some of those revenues, so reduces our revenues.
And I assume that you have use for that revenue?
Yes.
You could put it to use right away?
Yes.
Are there instances of school facilities that you could probably come up with a list of?
I'm sure everyone here is familiar with a list of facilities that need work.
Yes, sometimes we read about it in papers, as you know.
Sometimes.
Yes, unfortunately. So I just wanted to clarify that, and the district's amount of debt service on that, on the, on the borrowing that you're doing for infrastructures, about how much?
I don't have the debt service for that, just that piece. Our total debt service for this year is just shy of $300 million a year. The borrowing, we had always anticipated doing a borrowing about now, and with our better credit rating and market conditions, we'd originally anticipated of doing about $275, $300. Those conditions would have allowed us to borrow about $400 million with the same debt expectations. Obviously, because of the concerns about the facilities and market opportunities, we took advantage, doing the $500 million borrowing, adding about, we're estimating the final numbers, and yet about $8 to $10 million a year of additional debt service.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just want the members, we have a lot of questions, be cognizant of the fact we have a lot of witnesses, and we want to make sure that we get everybody in today. I actually ordered dinner, all right? Just playing, just playing, just playing. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. As far as when you're doing, Rob, I guess, is when you're doing a, applying for abatement, when you have a mixed-use building of, of commercial and residential, now that we're doing this, would that be done by OPA?
Yes.
And they would then have to differentiate between a, say, a residential apartment building on top of a commercial use?
Right, so the residential portion would be covered by this legislation, and the commercial would be covered by the pre-existing legislation.
So we'd be, they would receive two assessments?
I think so, they would either, yes, they would have to receive two, that's right.
Okay.
Hadn't actually talked through those logistics, but that makes sense.
All right, I didn't know how that would work, and so I was just curious to see how that would play out. But would be OPA, who would do that?
OPA, yes, takes the applications and makes the determinations.
Of the assessed values for both the commercial use and the residential use?
Yes, and whether someone qualifies for the abatement and which abatement they would qualify for.
Right, because I think right now, if they do it, it's a commercial, you get a commercial abatement for a building like that. Right, so that would change in the new...
So the residential abatement now would be different from the commercial abatement, so the differentiation would be really important.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon. Just have a few questions, and Councilwoman Gimm started some of these questions, I'm curious, and a couple of matters. Mr. Monson, the school district has a capital deficit of, what was the amount again, I'm sorry?
$4.5 billion.
$4.5 billion, on the capital side. Now currently, they have a, what's your current fund balance?
We... We projected to end this past June 30th about $214 million fund balance.
And what is your projected fund balance for next couple of years going out?
I believe we're projected to end the current year at about $154 million, dropping to roughly $50 million in '22 and being negative by '23.
By FY '23, being, having a negative?
I'm sorry, FY '22. I'm sorry, FY '22. '20 and '21 are positive, '22 would be negative.
So FY '22, be having a negative fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. And if the tax abatement were to go away immediately, how much money would the school district receive next year?
I actually have not done the year-by-year analysis.
Just give, give a range, give a range.
Sorry, just give us one sec, give me one second. So '21, we wouldn't receive anything?
So wait, could you read, so?
In the first, in the first year, first year, we wouldn't receive anything?
So let me make sure I understand it. So if the 10-year tax payment were to go away immediately, you would receive no dollars in the upcoming fiscal year?
Correct, because there, all the projects that are out there, the issue is projects that could no longer qualify for the abatement as it's currently constructed.
So you would get no new money in FY '21. What would happen in FY '22?
Estimated about $1.5 million.
And then you have significant financial problems going forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. DeBeau, last year in the budget process, how much money did the city council and the mayor put in for the school district?
One second, let me just get that. It's about, I think it's $220, but I might have the year wrong. I think so, yeah.
$220 million. And then over the past couple of years, how much money has city council and administration put into the school district?
So over the current five-year plan, it's $1.2 billion over the '20 to '24.
And was that done with property tax increases?
It was not, no.
So then what was the source of that additional money? Because of my understanding that the city's budget is now about $5 billion?
Yeah, there are a few things. One, we slowed down the pace of wage taxes, wage tax reductions. We increased the transfer tax and we shifted money from our general fund. It was a combination of things.
But we've also, based on information I've seen from Pike and other financial entities, we've also had an increase in revenue coming to the city, correct?
That's correct.
Increase in wage tax?
Increase in wage tax, yes.
Sales tax?
Yes.
Transfer tax, I think is like 185% higher now than 10 years ago?
That's right.
And what was the basis of those dollars, of that increase?
Why did it increase? Because the economy has been expanding. We've had a really strong economy and one of the longest expansions in the country's history.
And when you say the economy is expanding, in what, in what areas has it been expanding? In reference to?
So real estate values have grown, right? So that has helped both the school district's revenue and the revenue that, that the city receives. Employment has grown, so that's helped us with wage tax. And that then in turn will help with things like sales tax because people have, have more money.
And so has there been additional development over that period of time?
Yes, there's been additional development.
And what's been the source of that development? From your perspective? I mean, you've been budget director for Mayor Street?
For the, for the source of development, I think I'm going to defer to our Director of Planning.
So I, you know, predominantly, as we've seen, a lot of the development that has been Eds and Meds, they continue to build. And then also, we've seen a lot of growth in the apartment sector. In the apartment sector.
In apartment sector, so new construction?
Predominantly new construction. You know, I think we touted that probably 10 years ago, it would have been hard to find a crane in the sky and, and now we see them proliferate. You know, we still aren't growing as, as strongly as some other places, but I think for Philadelphia, we, as, as Rob DeBeau said, we've been in a period of sustained growth.
And Ms. Fadulun, I believe prior to coming to the public sector, you worked in the private sector?
Yes, I did.
And in that role, you were responsible during development projects?
Yes.
And from your experience in some of the development projects you've been involved in, were some of those projects able to get done because of the tax abatement?
Yes.
So clearly, whenever you have some type initiative that was started 20 years ago, we definitely need to make changes. Would you say that's a correct assumption?
So I, I do think that the market has changed since this was first introduced. And, and it always makes sense to look at this type of policy on a periodic basis, which again is why I think you heard in the administration's testimony that we're very supportive of the evaluation piece in this legislation and that it's important to look at the impact of this type of policy every, you know, every few years, in this case, every three years. That that makes a lot of sense to figure out what's working, how it's working, what's not working. I think that's, I think we believe that that's just good practice.
So I will close by saying this. I mean, from what I'm hearing from you and also from the issues in reference to the school district, we need to make sure that we maximize as much revenue as possible for the district. But at the same time, we need to do it in a way that's not going to impact the city's economy.
Yes.
So I mean, clearly, having this type of conversation is something that's important. We definitely need to make some revisions. Anytime you do a policy that's over two decades old, there needs to be some changes, but we need to do it in a way that's benefit, especially our school district that has some major financial challenges. And hopefully today, today's conversation will be able to get to some type of decision that does the best that we can going forward with the perspective that we continue to look at this policy in reference to how we can increase revenue for the school district, but also making sure we have a strong economy in our city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. Mr. DeBeau, I just had a couple of questions regarding the administration's opposition to the increase in the homestead exemption. So I just wanted clarification. My only interest is in addressing individuals who have been losing their homes through mortgage foreclosure, addressing individuals who are experiencing issues around gentrification. And as we see neighborhoods thrive as, as a benefit of the tax abatement, we also have some individuals who want to stay within their homes. And I'm always the advocate in trying to find all the tax relief measures that we can possible to helping people stay inside their homes. Most importantly, making sure they stay home all the time. And so for 2004, FYI '21, what's the projected number of revenue that we are looking at to receive as relates to property tax assessments?
For FY '21, for the, for '21, we're projecting about a 3% increase in?
Give me a dollar, give me a dollar amount.
I have to look in the budget. Take me a second to get that. If I have it here.
I'm going to help you and then you can just clarify if I'm off. Projected number of revenue that we're looking to receive from property tax assessments is an amount of $100 million. That's when the homestead exemption would go into effect, projected.
Yeah. So the reason I talked about the, the change in the base is the dollar number is influenced by when appeals are heard. And so part of the reason for that increase is we're assuming that some of the appeals that were for the tax year '20 taxes are actually heard in '21 and so that there are some increases off of that. So the, the dollar increase isn't just a one-year increase. It has to do with kind of writing, writing up from appeals for prior years, too.
And what's the current amount of money in our surplus right now, in our fund balance?
We are projecting that we will end this year with a $300 million fund balance, which is roughly 6% of the budget, which is at the low end of the target range we have for where our fund balance should be and much, much lower than where the Government Finance Office Association says we should be.
And during the last two budget cycles ago, there was a construction tax that was on the table. And how much revenue as relates to, the construction tax didn't pass, but the administration came up with additional funding. How much money did we come up with over a certain period of times, over the several years? How much did we come up with?
For affordable?
Of nine new money to cover the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
So what we did for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is say that expiring abatements, the revenue from the expiring abatements would go to affordable, the city side of that revenue would go to affordable housing. And it was $83 million, I think, over five years.
$83 million over five years?
Yes.
And in June, you talked about us, you talked about putting out a search for a new Director of OPA.
That's correct.
What's the status? Because that's been, quite some time since we've been looking for a new directive off of the property assessment.
Yeah. So we, we went through a search. Didn't find someone, so now we've hired a recruiting firm to help us with the search and they're on board looking for someone.
Right. I just wanted to state those questions for the record again. And we definitely want to be supportive of the school district. And so the reason why I use the analogy of how we were very creative when we didn't do the construction tax, we found a way to come up with additional funding for the Housing Trust Fund. I think even moving forward with the homestead exemption to give some level of relief to predominantly low-income families who are living in very changing, gentrified neighborhoods, the opportunity to take advantage of an increase in the homestead exemption. I think we can be just as creative. And I believe the members in this body, who have always stepped up to the plate to fight on behalf of those who need support, will find ways to work with the administration and find funding to help people stay inside their homes. And so I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you, Mr. DeBeau.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Every year, we get to do a budget and we create a new document and a new five-year plan. And every year, that target moves. It moves through different appropriations. We move money around and we set up a document that prioritizes the values and the interests of all the citizens of the City of Philadelphia. So I'm not as concerned with filling the gaps of our five-year plan because in the last 12 years, I've seen that target move every single year. But I do want to get to the point of the reason we're having this debate around tax abatement, when you look at the $7,000 appeals, is our assessment process. And our dependency on the value of all land and then ultimately, who pays for that value? And the problem is not the abatement, although it, it could be tweaked and we all have our ideas about it. The problem is our insisting in spreading the value of the abatement to long-term residents, which has created the them versus us, the new versus the long-term residents. The leadership of OPA has, is a huge part of it. But we can do this minor tweaking today and we're going to still have 7,000 pissed-off people and a bunch of other people because the assessment process is still broken. And our dependency on artificially valuing our land has created this policy intersection in which we are now. How do we continue to incentivize and subsidize the building that we have in the city and minimize its impact on long-term residents who have not had value appreciation based on OPA? Not real one. Whose houses are not worth $250,000 because we're using trending models and spreading the abatement value. And so a document, a financial document on the income side is as much of a reflection of the values that we have as a government as the expense or the investment side. And so the, the fact is that this abatement discussion is, the, the problem is our assessment and our unwillingness to say that next year, we're not going to have double-digit assessment increases on people whose houses don't have value. This city policy, our OPA policy, is we want to capture all that development value that's unrealized. It's not realized until they pay taxes on it. But this unwillingness or this deliberate attempt to put all of that value on long-term residents has created this process. What are we going to tell the residents in March when they get their new builds?
So what, just to be clear, the growth in tax year '20 on residents was about 3.5%. It wasn't double-digit growth. It was, it was only about 3.5%. And if growth is in that range, again, I think we can say to residents, you know, your value's gone up nominally and that's what your assessment reflects.
But that's not what that reflects. When you look at, the last reassessment had a 10% increase, right?
That's not correct. The last reassessment had the 3.5% increase.
3.5% all over when you spread it out. This, the problem is, is how we spread it out.
For residents, that's right. Citywide for residents, it was about 3.5%.
Right. But it's how you spread it out.
Right. So some people would be higher and some people would be lower.
On the last three or four years, what has been the base value increase that we have realized in the City of Philadelphia? And the majority of that burden, where has it led? Because we know we've, we've messed up on the commercial side. That's why we're in court and we lost.
I'm not going to comment on something that's in court and you know I can't.
But that's why we lost it.
Like I said, I'm not commenting on that.
And we are losing the public discussion around residential when we can't demonstrate to people that their value, that they're not paying for the value of the growth of the city in a disproportionate way, right? And when you have 7,000 appeals, that, that tells you how people are feeling.
7,000 appeals on 540,000 properties. So that's appeals on about 1% of the property, 1.2% of the properties.
When you look at the value in, in some of the, and again, this was partly our fault with, with how historically we have assessed properties in this city, right? We assess based on, on permits, right? Which essentially disincentivize improvements and preservation, right? We, we, we have to change the, the, we were sold on AVI as a basis to get to more real value, as a way for people to realize real equity, right? And we've not gotten to the point where there's fairness in that system, right? So, and because we've not been able to guarantee people that the new, the three new houses on their block, they're not going to pay for that spread, that's why we're here where we are, right?
So I think we're here where we are in part because values citywide have gone up, right? The market has been strong and that means that values have gone up.
But the market is for the new development, not for the long-term residents. And we've not been able to convince the long-term residents of their value other than increasing their taxes. Their house still has one bathroom. It still has a bad roof. It still needs all the improvement.
Right. But it, it can sell for more than it did before. But I mean, that's the reason.
No, but we created that. That's a policy decision on our system.
That's the reason that we've put in place a variety of relief programs, right? That's why we put the homestead in place, why we put Loop in place, why we have payment plans that are below zero payment.
That's after the fact. We have a broken system and then we're going to create all these relief programs that people have to opt in because we know we have a broken system. And all I'm saying is that regardless of what we do today, the fact that you're sitting here debating on a minimal homestead support is problematic and goes counter. Because on the one hand, we have value to the abatement and its growth. On the other hand, we want to provide no or minimal support for residents. That is a debate that?
That's not fair. We've provided a lot of support for residents.
Council has, working with the administration.
The homestead already provides over $130 million a year in relief. That's not minimal. That's not minimal.
It is minimal, because the utilization is not there. It's this, it is minimal.
220,000 properties have homesteads. That's utilization.
That, and what percentage of that is city?
So...
We still have, we still have thousands of people who are not utilizing that.
For residential homes, that's about 70%.
Right.
But then there are other people who have things like the Loop program or have senior citizen tax frees. When you add those all in, you get, you get a much higher percent.
Again, the reason this debate conversation is so frustrating is because this council has always wanted to incentivize development. I have sat here and taken votes all over the place. We are not against that. We are trying to create tools to minimize the impact of what that is doing to long-term residents, because we have no plan, we have a broken assessment process, and we're still going to piss off all of the long-term residents until the political will is there to fix the OPA system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and let me say good afternoon to each of you. I want to go back, Mr. DeBo, to where you, and I think you just requoted this number for us in terms of Council President's question relative to the homestead exemption. How many households are there in the City of Philadelphia? How many households or homeowners?
I think the homeowner number is probably about 340,000.
So about 340,000. And you said 70% of those, that's where the 220?
Yeah.
Okay. So obviously, of all of the tools that we have here in the City of Philadelphia, it is obvious that the homestead exemption is the most utilized tool to help bring much-needed property tax relief to residents in the City of Philadelphia. But because of the uniformity clause, we can't pick and choose based on income levels about who's eligible to receive and not. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
So with that being said, I want us to, and I know this is, should be very familiar to you, Mr. DeBo, because this was the strategy we used during my tenure in the Pennsylvania General Assembly, when that enabling authority that this city council needed in order to even enact the homestead exemption, to enact the long-term owner-occupant program, to codify the ability for you to offer payment arrangements and plans to Philadelphia residents, along with our ability to collect additional delinquent property taxes, we used visuals like this. So with this in mind, I want you to, and I don't know if you can see it, I want you to think about residents who are in that section where it says substantial rehab, substantial rehab. That's actually the visual that we see in the middle. And very much like we see current residential tax abatements and abatements just for new construction, you will see that the cluster is in the specific area where neighborhoods are growing. I want you all to tell me, what do you think we have done wrong with this program that residents outside of this hustling, bustling, and growing Fifth and Third District and First, that they're not taking advantage, even if it's not new construction, because you know these neighborhoods are landlocked, right? So in many of them, you can't just go and build new houses, because you don't have the land there. But even when it comes to substantial rehab, where preservation is needed the most, what reason or rationale do you give or understanding about why the abatement is so underutilized in those areas outside of those that are growing?
You know, so I think what we see, kind of what we talked about at the beginning, right, that, that the abatement sort of favors higher property values, because you have to have something that can be abated. You have to have a value that could be abated in order to really get the benefit of that. So I think what we're seeing in a lot of these other districts is potentially that the cost of going into those districts and doing those renovations, even with something like the abatement program, you're still not going to get the property value high enough up there or the revenue stream high enough in order to justify the cost of doing those improvements, even with the abatement.
So let me, let me go back and ask you this question. As I, as I, again, look at this visual, it is defined as substantial rehab. Can any of you tell me, how is substantial rehab defined in the tax abatement? What do I have to do to be, to be considered to have made a substantial rehab to my property in order to be eligible to receive the abatement?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that's a definition, that's probably something that came through Ellen and I, and what the, how they would classify the building permit. I assume that what that means is that you're doing some kind of major system repair, something that would require a building permit. So there is some kind of work that you can do to your house that doesn't necessarily trigger a permit. But off the top of my head, I don't know exactly what the definition is.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because when people think about substantial rehab, and as I've understood it, you should be putting on some kind of addition to your property in order to be eligible for the substantial rehab portion. And the reason why we need to rethink that and rethink the way the enabling legislation is written that created the tax abatement is because if we are, and listen, let's commend this council and administration for the things that we've got and right, and the tools for neighborhood preservation that we've done. But if our goal is truly to focus on neighborhood preservation for long-term owner occupants who are in those good old-fashioned brick-and-stone houses that have good bones but need new modernization on the inside, we have to find a way to redefine what substantial rehab means, so that regular, everyday people who are making substantial repairs to their properties are eligible to see them get abated. Let me give you an example. You are trying to increase the value of your home, improve your property, and you decide that you want to go and get new hardwood floors put throughout your house. Guess what? That becomes a substantial improvement. If you want to modernize the house and knock a wall down, because you do like the modern fourth-floor plan, but you like the good old brick and stone and not the aluminum siding that they're using today, you should be able to have those substantial rehabs abated. Is this administration in a position to say that it is willing to work with this council, along with the General Assembly, to figure out how we can broaden the definition of substantial rehab?
Sure. Sure. The response I got is sure. I mean, so I think all those things, again, I think the trigger is whether you need a building permit. So if you're putting in flooring, you may not necessarily need a building permit to just replace your flooring, right?
So, but would you, but listen, what if you, what if you, for example, when we talk about people who are trying to do things on their own, and let's be real about this, we talk about the good, the good brick and the good stone. Do you have to get a building permit when you are getting your bricks painted?
I don't, I think it depends on what kind of the nature of that work is, whether, if that structural, has it impacted on structural, I believe you do have to get a building permit.
So, and again, the reason why I'm being so very specific is because if we're talking about fairness and equity and trying to manage investments and relief for Philadelphia residents, I would argue that the people outside of the areas where we see the most growth, they have been consistent contributors to this city's tax base, and they have not seen a return on their investment.
Yeah. I think the question to look at beyond just the definition of substantial rehab is, remember, the abatement is about your property value increase. So it would be, so what, if you, if you put in new hardwood floors, for example, and it was determined that what that does is increase the value of your home by $5,000 or, let's say, $10,000, because you put in those floors, your abatement would only be on that $10,000 increment, right?
But right now, but the issue, but the issue is, right now, the $10,000 to $15,000 investment that you just made on the flooring, I would argue that there are very few, if any, because I haven't heard of any. And when you go and look at these charts and these numbers, you know, I have to excuse me, because my district has sort of maybe nine in substantial rehab, maybe two in new construction, but I've never heard of those kinds of significant improvements being included, you know, as being abated, which is why I know we have to work in a coordinated effort to have them included.
Right. So what I was going to say is, you know, that, that increment, if you're just getting an abatement on that $10,000 value increase, that might not be enough to help support that kind of renovation.
Stop. Put a pin in it. Put a pin in it, because you just, you just hit the nail on the head.
Yes.
You want me to tell you why?
So we, no, so I think we have to look at, how do we ensure?
We talked about the homestead exemption being the most valuable tool. Mr. DeBo just told us that of all of the programs we offer, 220,000 Philadelphians are signed up for the homestead exemption. But you want me to tell you why about $10,000 to $15,000, a $25,000 improvement wouldn't be included? Because I have to choose between whether or not I want to receive the homestead exemption and/or apply for my substantial $25,000 investment. So when you hear me talk about a coordinated effort, we've got to go back and change the laws, because then now, I've got to make a choice to whether or not I'm going to get this $45,000 homestead exemption, you know, and I need it, it's extremely valued, but at the same time, why am I not benefiting from the $20,000 to $25,000 that I was able to invest in improving my property? So maybe what we need to do as a team is go to the Pennsylvania General Assembly, and we need to tell them that we need substantial changes to this enabling legislation. We need to redefine substantial rehab. We need to remove the requirement that you have to pick or choose whether or not you get the homestead exemption or the abatement. And what I'm saying is, we've done some good things, but we have to work together in order to get this done. I'm not finger-pointing. We've got to work together to get it done.
Yeah. And again, I think, I think what I'm trying to say is, we just got to make sure that whatever we come up with is actually a benefit.
Thank you. We, just one more time, I want to remind our colleagues, we have eight additional panels. So we really need to be cognizant of the time. Next up, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilwoman Jones, and then Councilwoman Bass. That will conclude the first round or the second round. We have to limit it to five minutes, so we can make sure that we get to the individuals that have come down to testify. Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, administration. Two questions, following up on the percentage of those who've taken advantage of the homestead, or more specifically, those who have not. If we're at the 70% range, what does it take, what will be required to inform that 30% that this is an opportunity, so that we can be in a 90-plus situation?
Yeah. And the 70%, it's a little understated, because there are people in other programs, like abatements, or the Loop program, or the senior citizen tax frees, that have other kind of opportunities. But there still are, you know, thousands of people, and I think it requires, you know, some significant outreach, which I know we've done over time. But that's really the answer to that, is it just requires outreach.
Define significant outreach.
We've tried, and even going door-to-door, you know, to letting people know. So that, that's the kind of outreach I'm talking about.
As someone who started my career going door-to-door, linking up with senior citizen homes in particular would be valuable, because too often, when we visit senior citizen homes on Fridays, the homestead is still a foreign anomaly that many of them could be taken advantage of. And so non-traditional approaches are going to be required. My second and final question is, since the tax abatement, based purely on data, which is in front of us, the maps, is primarily in center-city neighborhoods, and many would argue the obvious, that increasingly have become gentrified, has the administration considered tax strategies that might spur development in other communities like the Seventh or the Ninth?
Unfortunately, she's gone. She would probably, she would probably be better to answer that question. But yes, we have. One of the challenges with tax strategy and trying to have it spur development in particular areas is the uniformity clause. So we can't tax differently in different areas. So it makes it really complicated to try to spur development in a particular area.
So that punctuates Councilwoman Parker's appeal.
Yes.
Okay, then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Good afternoon. Couple of just clarifying facts, because we do have other panel members to testify. But if I understand all of these numbers, I'm going to start with the question, are taxable property bases 100 billion?
Our, our tax, I think it's about 100, hold on, give me, give me a second. I have that here somewhere. It is 168 billion.
So it's 168 billion. If I recall, we were talking about 99 billion, maybe, five years ago, when we were visiting some of our city coffe crisis. So we've done...
So that was, the first year after AVI, we were at 137 billion.
So if we were to try to look at the value, increased value of our property, and to say, is that a trajectory that has leveled off or is going to continue, what would be your response?
So in FY '20, the increase was about 3.5%. So it was much, we did trending. It was much slower than it had been in the year before. So there was a bit of a leveling off in that year. And I think if you look at, if the 70% of economists project that we're going to go into a recession, if that happens, you'll see a real leveling off in...
So I'm not talking, see, I've been here long enough to know that when we have surpluses, we have doom and gloom recession. And when we...
I'm not...
Wait, wait, oh, oh, oh. And then, when we have recession, we have to cut back. So there's never an opportunity for, you know, a positive outlook. So I get that. Your job is to be...
And I'm really quoting economists. It's not just me saying it, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I get that. But the trend has always been, we've been optimistic about the amount of revenues that have come over. I've been here long enough to hear that pattern develop, too. So I just want to state that for the record. We're talking about 168 billion dollars' worth of taxable properties, increased from the time we've done AVI from 130...
Four-ish. So it increased about 30 billion.
Right. So if we were looking at the stock markets or whatever other form of investment, this ain't bad.
Yeah. Stock markets are a lot better than that, though.
Yeah. But not, but this is not bad. We're doing well. I know the doom and gloom recession is coming. Winter is coming. I get it. But right now...
Winter is coming. Thank you for that comparison.
Summer is, summer is $300 million worth of super. So I want to establish that. Second thing I want to do is I want to say that, how many residential properties are there in the City of Philadelphia?
I think the number's about 340, I think. Have that one with me.
Three? Say it again.
I think about 340, but I might be off.
And how many of them are receiving abatements of some kind?
On the residential, it's about 12,000, a little more than 12,000, any abatements?
I have a number that says 15.
15 is all properties, but for residential, it's about 12.
And that's about $133 million worth of abatement?
For residential?
Yes.
For residential, I think it's about 80 million, just for residential. For all properties, I think it's more like 150, 160.
Okay.
The 130, I think, may be the homestead number.
Okay. So if that is indeed true, then we're trying to look at our tax strategy for four basic food groups. One is the taxpayer, of course, homeowners.
Right.
The second group is the school district, I would say, development community, and then our city operating dollars.
Yes.
And so any way that we adjust this, there is some predictable up or down ebb and flow.
Right.
Question I have, if we've increased our property values consistently over the last five years, is it safe to predict that we will continue to do so, that some of these stakeholders, including the city's operating budget, may not be as adversely impacted because of our growth? We were asked a couple of years ago, not only to look at... We were asked a couple of years ago, not only to look at AVI, but also to increase the mileage. Had we done that, we would have probably seen triple, no, double the surplus. So as we look at pessimism, we also should measure that with optimism about where we are, and the values that people are finding in our real estate. And be able to kind of find that middle ground on what we should do with abatements. Because if we cut the abatements, as I got a chart here, it says we will probably, over the next eight years, as the city of Philadelphia gets $61 million? Is that correct? City portion.
That, it looks like it would probably be actually a little higher than that, but we would receive additional revenue, yes.
And the school district portion's about 74 million?
Higher, yeah.
A little higher?
They are higher, yeah. Because they get 55% of the property tax.
So as we look at AVI, and I do agree with my colleagues that say we need to fix that formula somehow, to be a little more realistic, and like somebody that doesn't have a Harvard degree in economics could figure it out. But there's probably at least a platform to stand on that our property values are continuing to rise. And that is probably a safer predictable revenue for two of the stakeholders, the school district and the city of Philadelphia. The only question I have is this impact on the development community. But we're going to be fairly okay if we don't have that recession that you're talking about, indeed.
I think that's a big if. But yes, if the economy continues to grow, we'll continue to see growth in our values. If it doesn't, you know, if as most economists predict you start to see a recession, then that growth could stop.
And if I understand this process here about taxation, we can't change our taxes in mid-year, but we could always adjust them every year to meet our reality.
We can adjust them for the following year, that's right.
So I'm not afraid of the change to come. I love your pessimistic kind of review. I love how we get pleasantly, sometimes surprised, with our revenue. But we need to make it better if we want to keep long-term residents, residents in the city of Philadelphia, because we're losing them.
Right, and I think kind of to one of the points you made, I think that's why the administration favors looking at the abatement and making change to it. So I don't think we disagree with you there.
No, we, no. I said I love how you project some things. But I tend to be more optimistic over the years about the future of this city than sometimes you have to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief, because I know we have, you know, a lot of folks who came down and spent a lot of time here from the communities who want to testify. And I think it's most important to hear from them. You all are great, but we really want to hear from them. So I just had a...
If you want to start now, that's fine with us.
Not yet, not just yet. But I did want to just really add some clarity, because I just feel like sometimes we give mixed messages unintentionally. And so I just wanted to go back to some of the testimony, and which I think is a little confusing. And I just wanted to make sure that we are absolutely clear that we are, you know, that the administration is on board with what we are trying to do here. And that is to make some very small incremental changes to a program that has had a huge impact here in the city of Philadelphia, and is desperately in need of some significant change. So the question that I had was on Mr. Engler. It was on your testimony, in which you said that the abatement has helped achieve the goal of strengthening a very weak market here in the city of Philadelphia. Numerous studies have shown the abatement program helped achieve the goal... And then you go on, otherwise. And that statement, to me, suggests that the administration should wholeheartedly support the proposal as presented. It should wholeheartedly support the bill that we presented. But then, as I read a little bit further on, you know, it states that, you know, "Studies have concluded the elimination or reduction of the existing abatement would lead to a reduction in construction activity, and loss of development, and employment, and tax revenue." And it's sort of like the, and I hate to put it this way, but it's sort of like the doom and gloom that we always hear is going to happen if we take away the 10-year tax abatement. And I just don't believe it to be so. And so, you know, again, I think that this is a program that when it started, and keep it in mind that we've had abatements in Pennsylvania since the 1970s. This is nothing, you know, radically new. But what changed, you know, early in the 2000s is the, you know, like the lifting of caps, and, you know, just sort of anything was able to be abated to some degree. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, that, you know, periodic evaluation should happen between city council and the administration. I think that that's something that's very important. But I think that how we start and the message that we send is very, very important. And so again, I think it just sends a really, you know, unclear message in terms of whether the abatement has done its job, and now we need to make some significant changes, or whether these changes are going to be detrimental to the economy, which I personally don't believe to be true. But it's also in your testimony. So if you could clarify that for me, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So discussing the abatement in, I guess, in that paragraph in the testimony, when we talk about the very weak market, I'm talking about the market that existed when this 10-year abatement was instituted.
Yes.
And then towards the end of that same paragraph, we agree that because the market has shifted since then, in the intervening 18 or so years since this was adopted in its current form, it makes sense to revisit it and look at it. And then also later in the testimony, we mentioned that the phase-out approach, as being discussed today, makes sense as a way to change that.
Right.
So I don't know that it's necessarily disconnected in other that this was a program implemented several years ago to address the market as existed then. And it makes sense to make changes as the market changes. But it also makes sense to evaluate that change, and to evaluate how this change has impacted the market in three years or in four years, and to do that prospectively going forward.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it makes sense to take a look at this, you know, going forward on a periodic basis, because, you know, here we are, almost 20 years in, and we're finally getting around to making some changes that really should have happened a very long time ago. But I think that your statement, you know, it would have been fine, I think, if your statement would have stood as it was, but adding the fact that, you know, but the studies have concluded the elimination would, you know, lead to job loss and revenue loss, and, you know, the sky is falling. I think that that sort of makes it seem as if the, that there is not a clear vision from the administration in terms of where you all are on this. I think that that additional information that you provided in the testimony really does make it a little murky.
Sure. I think, at least, we felt that it was necessary to do that. We asked Jones Lang LaSalle to do a study for us about a year and a half ago to really analyze several different options for changing the abatement. And what they found was that, no matter which way you changed it, there would be some negative activity. It's not that, you can't change a policy, change a policy that has been successful in changing the market, at least we think it has, and not expect to have any impact at all. And I think what they found in their study was that there would be an impact. And we felt it necessary to make sure that in our testimony, we note what that impact is. Now, that doesn't mean that you don't make a change.
Okay.
I think we have to understand and go into making any policy change. Because no matter what we do as a government, no matter what we decide to fund, no matter what policy we decide to implement, it's always going to have impacts. And some of those impacts are not going to be known to us when we make the change, which is why I think it's so important that we do the periodic evaluations, to really get a sense of what we're doing. Has it worked? Has it not worked? Has it had unintended consequences that we didn't know of when we implemented it? So I think that's why we felt it was necessary to include that in the testimony, because we have that from the study that we conducted in the recent past. And we should all go into any changes that are going to be implemented with eyes wide open about how it will impact certain sectors of our economy.
Okay. I would agree. I think it's, you know, that to some degree, it's irresponsible not to make a change. And where we see a policy that's had such a huge impact here on the city of Philadelphia, for us to, you know, go this long, like I said, almost 20 years in, and we're just getting to make changes now, I think that this should have been done a long time ago, so. But thank you for your clarity. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe we have Councilman Dom, and then Councilman Oh, and then we'll start the five minutes. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your testimony today. I just have a few quick questions. In our current billing of real estate, I think you mentioned it was 168 billion that we bill? And is it about 120 to 122 billion that's actually billed? Because the others are eds and meds that we don't bill real estate taxes for?
Yeah, that's right.
That's pretty accurate?
Yeah.
So we don't bill about 48 billion of real estate value?
Right.
Okay. And any idea what that billable figure was four to six years ago?
That's the 99 billion that we're talking about. The taxable number, yeah.
And is it true that like six, seven years ago, real estate tax billings were about 1.1 billion, seven years ago?
I'd have to look at that, but...
That's what it looked like in the records.
I'm guessing you're looking at a document you have.
And today, it's about 1.7 billion?
Again, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. And then the other question I have is that, I want to just clarify. You've mentioned 340,000 properties are residential?
Right.
And you have any idea of that amount, how many are actually owner-occupied?
That's the owner-occupied number. That is the owner-occupied number, I think, yeah.
And how many total tax bills are there?
Total tax bills are about 580,000. But that includes, obviously, non-residential, commercial.
Well, here's my question. If I keep hearing that the city's 51% owner-occupied housing, how could that 340,000 be accurate?
Right. I'd have to look at that. That sounds like it wouldn't work.
Okay. And then just a last question I just want to mention regarding this bill that we're trying to discuss today. I want to give credit to the council president for herding us together to get this bill put through. And we had all different opinions. And no, it's not perfect. And everyone feels it's not perfect on either side of the equation. But I guess that's governing to a degree. And the good thing about it, though, is that it keeps in place a very important factor, and that is, we all agree that we need more jobs in the city and good-paying jobs. And this bill keeps that piece in place, which is very important. And it keeps in place the renovation of our existing structures. So old factories, old warehouses, rundown row homes that need to be renovated keeps this, keeps it in place. So I think for those things, I want to thank you, council president. And that's basically my comment today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And as you know, thank you for the collective effort of this council, which is a part of being a legislator. You always have to build consensus about whatever it is we do. Chair recognizes Councilman Oh.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Council President. I'm just making a speech. But the reason I'm doing it is because I have a very different understanding of this entire situation. So I just want to put it out as best I can. And you could respond or not, if you think it's important or whatever. But to me, this issue is about the building industry and developers versus residents, homeowners and renters. And it doesn't have to be, but it's just ended up that way. And I think people are confused over the effects of what they've seen, and they think it's the 10-year tax abatement. And it's actually not. It's the assessments. The 10-year tax abatement has been a good thing. We had areas of the city that had a very little value to it. And after Mayor Rendell did his thing, John Street cleared the way, and along came investments and improvements that actually increased the value, truly increased the value with real investments. But that 10-year tax abatement, which meant that a house, or two houses, that were exactly the same value, $100,000 in real value, when someone put $1 million into one of those houses, that increased the value truly by $1 million, but they only paid $100,000 in taxes. But at the end of 10 years, the money would then come to the city as it is coming. It might not have been there. People argue it might or might not have been there without the 10-year tax abatement. But what people are reacting to is the fact that their house has not increased in value in any way. There's been no improvement to their home. Their home is just getting older. And the city comes along and assesses it at a value beyond what they can pay. And they're watching their neighbors, family and friends being forced out of their homes with sheriff sales for a value of a home they're never, ever going to receive. And so even if we amend the abatement and move it around, it will continue to help development. It will help the building industry. They will be able to do their things, right? But it won't help the homeowners, who are being pushed out of their neighborhoods because of incorrect, inaccurate, overly-high assessments that they can't afford to pay the taxes on. And so the assessment has to be fixed. And so I think you could do both. I mean, the abatement was a state incentive to invest and develop poor communities, oftentimes high in crime, where there wasn't development or investment. But the city made it, the entire city. And that's why, when you look at the map, the investments are in center-city and other luxury, high-rise development areas. And I know the city wants to keep that incentive there, to keep building, because we're a high-tax city with high labor costs. And that offsets it. And so if you separate the two, we could keep doing the building in center-city. But really, we're kind of coming down towards the end of the value of the 10-year tax abatement. It really is meant for helping economically-challenged communities. And then, maybe there's some specialty projects. But I would just like to say that I don't think it helps people, whatever we do with this 10-year tax abatement, if we don't fix the assessment problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green. Councilman, we're on our five-minute.
Thank you, Council President. I was not going to go through another round of questions. But after my colleague, Councilman Sanchez, asked about the OPA process, and I, to be quite honest, I just can't even believe that we are about to go through another budget cycle, more likely than not, without an OPA director, with still a flawed system. I've asked about KAMA, which is Computer Assisted Mass Appraisal System, which we're not going to even get to, because we don't have an OPA director. And so the fact that you have 7,000 appeals on property assessments, that's because people that have resources have the ability to make those appeals. But when you say 3% increase, the majority of that increase is hitting people who are lower or moderate income, because they don't have the resources to get an attorney or do the assessment themselves. So we're putting that additional burden on people who are low to moderate income, because we have a failed system. And so my question is, when are we going to address OPA? I do not want to go through this budget system, once again, without having an OPA director. The fact that we can't get KAMA, we've been talking about KAMA for 10 years, at least, since you were budget director under Mayor Street. The fact that we are a city that is a major city in this country, and we cannot fix our assessment system is unbelievable. And I cannot believe that we're, we didn't even know if we didn't find an OPA director. The fact that we're about to go through this process, once again, go through a budget process with revenues based on assessments that we don't even know are actually correct. They're impacting people of moderate income to all income throughout the city of Philadelphia. That is one of the issues that has been exacerbated by the 10-year tax abatement, is the OPA system. Please tell me, we're not going to go through a budget process, once again, without having some type of fix on OPA?
So KAMA is still going live early next calendar year?
It's going live early next year?
Yeah.
Now, how long have you been, how long has KAMA been going live?
Every year, when you've asked me when it's going live, I've been telling you it's going live in early 20...
Wait, wait, one more.
Can I finish my sentence?
Every year, every...
It's going live in early 20, and it still is. It's on the schedule we've talked about.
Every year, you've been saying KAMA's been going live... Every year you've been saying KAMA has been going live for how long?
Every year, since the beginning of this administration, I've been telling you it's going live in early 20.
And the previous administration?
No, no, you didn't let me finish my sentence. That it's been going live in early 20, and that's still when it's going live. It's going live when we've been telling you it's going live. We told you every year, it's early 20. That's still the schedule.
All right. Let's get back to OPA, because my time is almost done.
Yeah. So, OPA, there were a number of recommendations from the audit that council did and from the audit that we had done, and we are implementing those recommendations. So, part of that is the search. Part of it is getting a outside vendor to help us make sure that our data is accurate. Part of it is hiring more staff for OPA. Part of it was building out the modeling unit, which we've done. Another part of it was putting in place a sales validation unit to check the accuracy of sales. So, those are all things that we've done over the course of the last year to make sure that the assessments are more accurate.
Mr. Munson, I have a question. How much money has the school district lost from appeals from assessments?
How much have we lost on appeals of a?
How much have you lost on appeals, on assessments? Let's go last year, last year. Give me a range. Don't give me a specific number. Give me a range.
I actually don't know, just to explain, because we, when we budget, we assume a certain amount's going to be appealed, and a certain percentage is appealed.
Right.
So, I'd have to go back and figure out. And actually, we've been, the appeal rate's been a little better than what we've anticipated, in terms of, it's been lower than...
So, the appeal success rate is a little better than you anticipated?
The dollar amount, the dollar value has been...
Higher than you thought?
No, lower. The successful appeal has been lower than we thought. So, we've been getting, we've been conservative in our projections. We've been getting a little... I'm trying not to create this into a tongue twister. I'm sorry. We, so we, let's say we assume 10% is lost in appeal. Then that results about 8% is lost in appeal. We found the past few years. Ballpark, those are probably the accurate figures. But we always assume there's some measure of appeal and some loss, just like there's some measure of uncollected, and all those go into the factor of when we do our projections.
So, in your budget process, you assume you're going to lose some dollars on appeals?
Yes, correct.
I would venture, part of the reason why you're doing that, because we do not have a consistent system of evaluating property in the city of Philadelphia. We, if you, right now, if we go to the city website, you should be able to get a sense of how we assess city properties. We do not have that. We're in a situation where we have people of all income, especially moderate, low income, are believing that we are raising our taxes every year, not because city council has done that, because the assessments keep going up, and because we keep doing assessments on the backs of people that can't afford it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions of these witnesses? There being none. Guys, you need to get out of here as soon as you can. Thank you very much for your testimony. You want to go now? All right. We would like to briefly go into the public meeting, just for a couple of minutes. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to record my votes. I have to leave the chamber, and I know that requires us to go into a public meeting.
Yes, thank you. That vote shall be recorded. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you. That's on Bill's number 190943 and 190944.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now go back into the public hearing. We'll call our next panel.
I'm on both.
What, I?
I'm on both bills.
Yeah, I on both bills. Records shall reflect that. We will now go back in our public hearing. And next on my list, we have, I'm sorry, I just want to make, we had a couple of cancellations. First of all, we're going to ask the witnesses to keep their testimony to two minutes if at all possible. We want to make sure we have a lot of people listed, and some people have signed up in addition to our list. So, as best possible, if you could just keep your testimonies to two minutes. We have David Feldman, Gary Jonas, and Jim Moransky. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Moransky, and I'm the President of the Building Industry Association of Philadelphia. I'm joined by Treasurer Gary Jonas. The BIA is a trade association of residential and misuse developers working throughout Philadelphia, along with the professionals who provide the development industry with products and services. Thank you, Councilman Clark, and the rest of council for the opportunity to provide commentary on Bill 190944. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes walking through, walking the committee through the abatement and why it is so critical of residential development in our city. Gary will then discuss some amendments that we proposed. It's no secret that Philadelphia has fundamentally transformed since the passage of the 10-year residential property tax abatement, bringing much-needed investment to the city, increasing revenues, creating jobs, and improving infrastructure. The tax abatement served to correct the market failure to supply housing where demand already existed.
Excuse me. Come on, folks. Go ahead. Please proceed. You'll get a chance to testify.
The benefits of the program have not yet reached all the neighborhoods because demand has not been strong enough, and the rents and sales prices therefore not high enough, which is why you see a large cluster of, of the abatements in Center City. It's where, it's where the prices are high enough that you can build new construction, and the abatement is taken advantage of. While construction has been impressive, we lag our peer cities in construction of housing units. Our unprecedented construction boom is not because there are windfall profits to be had, not because there's excess demand, but because we have finally reached a point where just enough demand for real estate and real estate financing conditions are just at the right point, making sense to do low interest rates and city incentives that it finally makes sense to build. Philadelphia real estate development is in a goalie lock zone. If demand evaporates a little bit, or if the incentives lever is pushed to increase costs even in the slightest, the construction favorable financing conditions will disappear, and the cranes we all enjoy working in will slowly fade from the skyline, along with the wage, sales and use, sales and occupancy, business income, realty transfer, and real estate taxes that new buildings generate. New real estate development creates a broader tax base, and all of those dollars provide additional funding for public services and schools regardless of whether the, where the develop, where the development occurs. And contrary to the widespread misperception that the abatement is just a temporary windfall to developers, the numbers strongly confirm that represents a long-term source of growth to the city economically, demographically, and fiscally. Of the 10,000 units that have been built under the abatement, 2/3 remain owned by the initial occupant. Of those that have since sold, the majority have sold for prices greater than the original purchase price despite no longer having an abatement. Over the course of 10 years, their abatements were in effect. These dwellings still generate nearly $104 million in real estate taxes and currently generate $44.8 million per year in real estate taxes. There was a question asked earlier whether or not the abatement has changed, and since its inception. Maybe not by legislation, but a few years ago, the OPA changed how they were assessing land value after the project was complete, which then reduced the abatement by about 25%. Now, we're talking about another 45% decrease with this change.
Mr. Moransky, if you...
Yes.
We got a limit.
Yes, sir. Two quick points to wrap up. You know, over the last couple of days, we've received, the BIA's received a lot of questions on why we have proposed a compromise to the bill, because BIA's position has always been to fight any change to the abatement. And the reason it's been that 14 council people signed on to this bill, so we understand there's a time for change, there's a need for change. We asked that the city council listen to the BIA and hear us when we say that a train, a change this drastic will have a major effect on the market and could spin the real estate into a recession. And one other point on implementation, regardless of the timeline, I know there's back and forth, different proposals on timeline, regardless of the timeline, I would propose that the deadline be based on building permit application and not on the building permit approval. We saw that same deadline be set, and the same implementation timeline set when we redid the new plumbing code this year, as well as the new building code, because it creates undue stress on LNI to try to determine when that building permit gets approved and when it comes out. It's unfair to LNI, and it's also unfair to the applicant that it be on the approval date of the building permit. And that's why I propose that it's on the building permit application.
Thank you. And I, and I do want to acknowledge that, that you all, the BIA has been working with people. You know, we had other conversations around the construction tax. You guys were an integral part of that discussion. So, I do want to acknowledge your willingness to work with city council and other stakeholders on a number of different issues. And I want to say I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My name's Gary Jonas. I'm the Treasurer of the BIA. I'm going to be super quick here in trying to stick with your timeline. We have three proposed amendments that we're looking at. Number one is, we would love to see the amendment stay 100% in effect for the first five years and decline for the next five years. There's reasons for us as developers why that's beneficial, but more importantly, there's reasons for buyers, and specifically affordable homeowner buyers, that when they're qualified for their mortgages, it's based on what the taxes are over the next five years. So, what that means is, somebody buying an affordable unit that has this tax abatement that declines over five years now has an additional significant burden from a qualification standpoint. So, while you could get to almost the same thing by putting that first five years in a static state, we think that's really important to potential homeowners that are buying specifically affordable. So, we wanted to mention that. The second thing is, we'd love to push back the implementation date, and we are suggesting July of 2021, which I know nobody's really in favor of. But I wanted to give you a quick one, one of our member examples that explains why we are requesting that, and it's this. We have somebody that purchased property already that's a current member, is working with their council district and local RCO to provide 20% of the units in the building affordable. They're 12 to 18 months from today to get in for building permit, which would mean that if this proposal were to go into effect as proposed, that project would not have, would not be able to work the way it was, and we'd have to go back and reduce the amount of affordable housing that's in that unit. So, by asking for the extension, what we're really asking for is the projects that are currently in, in the pipeline or stuff that people have purchased already, that that stuff is able to get through based on all the underwriting that was done and all the good projects that they would be able to continue. And then finally, we're requesting that there be an amendment to the language that says that if a project receives its zoning approval and then gets appealed, that they have 180 days from the end of its appeal to file for its building permit and still get the full tax abatement. And the reason for that is, we don't want a project to get appealed just for the purposes of trying to get it to not get its tax abatement, right? And that could happen as an unintended consequence of what's here. So, that, you know, those are the three things that we're looking for. We, as, to the point that you made, we think that we've shown that we're willing to compromise and willing to try and create a better outcome for everybody, but we think that sometimes there's some unintended consequences to come with that, and that these amendments would be thoughtful in that process.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Feldman?
Thank you. I'm David Feldman, Executive Director of the Development Workshop. I'll summarize through my written testimony in interest of time. The Development Workshop fully supports preservation of the 10-year tax abatement because it's been instrumental in growing Philadelphia, pulling the economy out of the Great Recession, a time when people were starting to look 10 years ago at the tax abatement. We saw a drop from almost 12,000 construction jobs in Philadelphia in 2008 to 9,000-plus jobs, about a 20% job drop in one year from 2008 to 2009 in construction jobs, and it stayed down for five years. So, this is why the 10 years ago and 15 years ago was not a time to be debating it, because we were bleeding construction jobs. So, we, we realized now is time to, to look at this debate and have the periodic evaluation requirement. We think that makes sense, to make sure that we're looking at what is the impact of any change that's made and enough time to evaluate that. The bigger, more problematic piece is, as the other two presenters have said, is the timeline. Our suggestion is that the deadline be any project that's applied for zoning prior to July 1, 2020, as opposed to building permit. The example I'd like to give, Council President, there are three projects in your district, and Councilmember Squilla, there are two projects in your district, that as we are sitting here today, across the street and across Love Park, there are five projects that are at CDR. I think one or two of them have already been delayed and are not being even heard at this CDR. So, they have applied for zoning a couple of months ago. None of those five projects is going to be able to get through what the city process is to get through zoning and building permit, to be able to apply by July 1st for, for the tax abatement application. So, those are, you know, there are a lot of projects that are already somewhat far along that would be hit by this, that would be changed. So, that's our concern there. And one thing I'd like to, because a question has come up, just that point of information. There are about 575,000 residential units in the city of Philadelphia. 10 years ago, we had a 58% homeownership rate, which got us to that 320, 340 owner occupied. We are down to about a 51%. Thank you, Councilperson Parker. 51% homeownership rate, which means we're now down into the 280,000 to 290,000 homeowners. 220,000 of those have homestead exemptions. 16,000 of those have loop, and then a certain amount of those have the abatement. And as the council member Parker pointed out, those 16,000 in any of the homeowner units under the construction rehab abatement are not eligible for the homestead exemption. Excellent point. Thank you. So, we're probably at something like 85% of homeowners who are eligible. And quite honestly, there are a lot of homeowners who don't think they're eligible because they have higher incomes, and they, they don't know that, that the program is because of state legislation not allowed to be targeted. And it may be an excellent point that that's something to look at.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And let me say good afternoon to each of you. For those of you who were in the chambers earlier, I want to reference my questions again to the visuals that are in front of us, and particularly in the middle where we see substantial rehab. And there are areas, if you can see the dots, where there are very few from a utilization perspective. My question to you as, as members of the development community, because whatever you do, it has to make good economic sense, right?
Right.
And we recognize that. What is it that you think would need to happen from a legislative perspective, an investment, and how do we incentivize the development community to work more in those areas where we haven't seen great utilization of this tool? Is there any like direction or guidance that you could give to us as local legislators and/or the state legislators, saying, if you want us to find it to be economically prudent for us to go in to work on substantial rehabs in those areas, this, hey, this is what we would need you to do? Because for me, the reason why the commercial and the industrial side is a no-brainer is because of the job creation, right? How can we get an industry to look at, look at that substantial rehab from an innovative perspective to say, wait a minute, maybe we could make more investment into a new market that's been underutilized?
Great question. And, and my suggestion would be the following, that one, the city owns a lot of actual houses, right? And the first thing that I would do is take the actual houses that you own and get them into the market, because we can fix them up cheaper than we can build a new house, right? And so, if you have this housing stock that's out there that's underutilized and doesn't get to the market, well, that makes it difficult, right? So, that's the first thing we can do. And if we do that, I, I don't know if this is what you want, but if we do that, that is going to increase the values and create some stability in some neighborhoods, which would then allow us to invest in other houses in those same neighborhoods, because you're starting to get an upward trend, right? What you see is the areas where there's an upward trend, well, there's tons of utilization. Where there's no upward trend, there's no utilization, right? So, if we could get targeted in those areas that you're talking about and start with houses that we can make economic sense of, which is, so by way of example, if it costs $230,000 to build a workforce house, new construction, it costs $75,000 to rehab that existing house, right? What we don't have is access to that existing house. And if we could start there, I think that would be a huge step in the right direction. It would get developers comfortable in neighborhoods they're not in currently, right? And it would start to get the discussion going where you want, and then you could go to the market and start to take houses from the market and continue that process.
And council, council member, I think the, using that visual is misleading in a lot of ways. I think your discussion with Ann Fadulin was instructive in that, in that either or. So, you know, council... So, you know, Councilmember Bass, Jumpstart Germantown, in fact, I'm not seeing enough dots to represent the activity of Jumpstart Germantown exactly because of that discussion that happened earlier. So a young developer from the neighborhood, and Councilmember Conona Sanchez isn't in the room right now, but Jumpstart Kensington in that area, and I'm sure Councilwoman Heenan, some of that bleeds to your district. We have the small mom-and-pop developers, right? Developers, meaning police officer who's fixing up a house on the weekend that he bought that was around the corner because he knew the family that where someone passed, or my family's old neighbor in Strawberry Mansion. You know, we see rehabs, I sold a house for $80,000 that was rehabbed, because for $25,000 you can do a rehab. Well, if you're selling that to a homeowner, they've got a homestead exemption of $45,000.
Right.
Why would they trade that? So where, where those dots are missing, exactly the wonderful kind of opportunity and the kind of development that's expanding the role of actually safe, up-to-date, simple rehab. The, the model, for instance, Habitat for Humanity, which I was a former executive director in Philadelphia, talks about clean, safe, affordable housing. It may not have granite countertops, it may not have three bathrooms, it may not have a rainfall shower, but it has a brand-new kitchen that went in with vermicke countertops, and maybe the stove is white and not stainless steel. You know, maybe it doesn't have central air, but for $80,000 to $150,000, a family was able to buy a home that was newly rehabbed, the electric, the heating, the roof and the windows are done, and half to a third of their real estate tax bills completely waived by the city of Philadelphia through the homestead exemption. So I actually want to thank city council for doing, for spending $250 million in other abatements that have really addressed the concerns that we have to preserve existing housing and expand entry-level homeownership.
Mr. President, thank you, and I want to thank the panel, but let me just say, I look forward to furthering this discussion. I think you heard my, the president and many of my colleagues note that this is sort of a tweak, right? First time in 20 years, but as we begin to move forward, fairness and equity in this growth and upward mobility has got to be the focus of this conversation, so I look forward to having that in the, in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Us too.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Very much. I'll be very brief also. Are any of you familiar with the school, Thomas Pierce Elementary School? Have you been there?
I have not.
Okay. So can you, it's been in the papers recently because of asbestos that was found, I think, when we did a visit, a number of us went there, and you could smell the bathrooms before you even hit the floor on which they're on. You can acknowledge the impact that struggling schools have on our market as well in the city of Philadelphia.
So Councilmember, I appreciate your comments, and as...
Yeah, I wasn't quite done.
I want to answer the question.
I do, I understand, but...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yes, that's okay.
Councilwoman, were you finished?
I was not.
Mr. Felder?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember. I thought, I thought that was the end of the question, I'm sorry.
So...
Don't be, don't be so anxious, let her...
Wanted to say...
Conscious the tone.
Let her, let her finish her question.
Per other comments, you know, we are in the work of looking at equitable development. You are in the business of your area of work, but we are looking at equity, and you can understand the impact that struggling schools have on our market as well, on your market, in fact. And I'm wondering how, in encouraging the delays or other types of things to changes in the abatement, how the, how the starvation of essential funding around our schools, how you would offset that?
So I, I would suggest, I agree with your point, right, which is everybody wants more money for the schools, so certainly fair. I would suggest that we don't believe that we're delaying the revenue coming in. We believe what would happen is that a bunch of stuff would have to go back to the drawing board that's currently in the process that would start to generate revenue for all the different parts of the city, and now that stuff is not going to be able to generate stuff in the short term, right? So a project that was hoping to get a permit in September, and now the rule changed, and now you go, well, I gotta go back to the drawing board, I can't do that project the way I was going to. And so now, I don't submit that project for another 12 months. Well, I've already delayed what the income was going to be 12 months that way, in every way, in the construction, you know, every, every place that there's revenue made through that process gets delayed because those projects have to go back to the drawing board. So I think what we're trying to say is, we're not trying to delay it just because we don't want to start paying the money, right? I mean, obviously, I don't want to pay money when I don't have to, but we recognize and came here under the impression that we are going to have to pay more money, and we're comfortable with that, and what we just want, don't want to happen is the unintended consequences of, hey, look, let's rush this so we can make money today, and in fact, you're not making that money because the process is getting delayed further because the projects come off the board and then go back on.
Yeah. And I understand that you, we also heard testimony from the school district earlier that a year's delay is $61 million on their end. And so our question is, how are we looking at this? If projects aren't shovel-ready, ready to go, we want to make sure that those projects that are shovel-ready, ready to go, you know, are moving in, in the pipeline. We certainly are going to work with everybody possible to make sure that they can do it. But at the end of the day, if they don't quite get there, it means you pay 10% a year. That's it. It doesn't mean that you don't get the abatement or that nothing happens, it just means that you pay in 10% a year, and that our schools become more stable and steady, and that we can work with other things, and this is an evolving process. But, you know, part of the goal is to recognize that there's a level of urgency around consequences that are not just individually related or just project-related, but that are significant because in aggregate, the schools pay $61 million for a year's delay. And that is not something that I think your industry can offset right now.
Right. So totally agree with that, right? I agree with you 100% that delaying $61 million, delaying $61 million is not a good option, right? The question is, did we sit down collectively and look at what we really thought would happen to the projects that are in the pipeline, and what would that really mean revenue-wise? Because if it was $61 million, I think that that's a fair discussion. I don't believe that that's the number, and I don't believe that us as industry and council have sat down together and really done that math collectively to say, hey, what is this really, and how do we come to something that's a compromise for both of us versus just kind of throwing a number out there, which is a correct number if all your assumptions are right? What we're saying is, we don't think you've thought through the entire process, we don't think those assumptions are 100% correct.
I'm just saying that we're the ones who went to Thomas Pierce School, but thank you.
And I'm just saying that...
Thank you, Council President.
Can I, can I just respond to that? You know, so just from a school perspective, right? With the thought that we don't care about the schools, right? So we are actively working with schools, the La Gloria Academy, which is one of the highest, dealing with one of the highest at-risk populations of students in the city, right? Providing scholarships, looking to provide buildings for them, working through the process of trying to help the schools, right? So the narrative that, hey, look, if you don't, if you don't believe in this, then you don't believe in helping the schools, isn't really a fair narrative. The fair narrative is, let's look at where the dollars are getting spent, and... Fair enough. I'm, I'm just saying that, again, everybody wants to help the schools. The question really is, is what you're proposing, what's the real dollar effect?
Thank you. Hold on, hold on. Thank you, um, thank Councilwoman.
So, and thank you for your testimony. When I move on to, real quick though, just want to give you, Councilman O. kind of touched on it, because this is really about the person in the neighborhood, particularly the person in the neighborhood that is quote-unquote gentrifying, increased values, the whole nine yards, and that person bought a house 20 years ago, 30, whatever, they're there, and development comes in, and there are a bunch of homes that are sold high value, 500, 600, 700,000, whatever, right? And the concern for that individual, I'm told, could conceivably be every year that that tax phases out, that there will be more tax liability on the individual, and I'm assuming that that will be the concerns of the development community because you guys are building. But the concern from the existing residents, because I represent a couple of those areas, is that you know what happens in those neighborhoods? When the values in those neighborhoods for the existing homeowners goes up, they get a letter every year from their mortgage company, and they say, you know what? Your escrow account is going to go up, right? Because your values and your taxes are going to increase every year in the foreseeable future. And you know what those residents do? They send in that check for that escrow account. So they are figuring out a way, and it's much more burdensome to them to adjust because they want to stay in their home. So all due respect, I think that the people who have a phase-down on their tax abatement will probably figure out a way to adjust, all right? Because I think what we're proposing here is a reasonable approach. We got to have equity, right? And there are a lot of people who don't think we're going far enough, all due respect, but we want to reach, we want to reach a reasonable approach because at some point, and I think you all, this has to change. Can't, I keep, can't keep looking in the faces of individuals and telling people, say, well, I know, and they say, Darrell, my taxes keep going up, and this guy built this house, and I don't even like the way it looks, right? It's four stories, I've got a two-story, and I ain't got to tell you guys know what's going on out there. At some point, you know, you got to adjust. This is 20, this has been a 20-year run, and the simple reality is, is that, you know, we're at a point in time when we think we are approaching a meaningful change that will provide significant revenues to the school district, why continuing to stimulate the market? So I just, and thank you, again, I want to thank you because you guys have been one of the few organizations that I got to say is willing, and always have a reasonable conversation to talk about possibilities of best making some change. So I just want to thank you all, thank you for your testimony so much. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, guys. Next up, we will have Panel Three, more, my man. Sir, 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 it's okay. Next up, we will have Madam Shakumba, Rhea Powell, Gail Loney, and Ron Winehorn. Whitehorn? I'm sorry. That's Ms. Loney. That's, that's the fifth district resident. Yeah, come on, grab a chair. You want to wait? Yeah, this, come on. You all can self-select in terms of, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. We want to try to limit your testimony to three minutes. We got a lot of people on the list.
Good afternoon. My name is Rhea Powell. I'm here in support of Ordinance 190944, which would modify tax abatements for new construction and improvement costs such that they decrease over time instead of remaining fixed. I commend council on this first step towards reforming what should be a targeted and fair system of tax incentives, one with clear goals and transparent assessment of its impacts. I do not doubt that the abatement has contributed to development over the nearly two decades that it has been in its current form, but although we know that the abatements have likely contributed to development, we cannot know to what degree some of that development might have happened in the absence of such a broad and untargeted abatement. Economic and demographic shifts have also played a role in the growth of the city, and parsing out which factors have had what degree of impact is complex. What we do know is that the growth and development that has occurred in recent years has not been uniform across the city. The majority of abated properties are concentrated within the greater center city area, and many of the neighborhoods that have seen the most development and reaped the greatest tax benefits are the very same neighborhoods where growth is likely to occur even in the absence of a generous tax abatement. Meanwhile, neighborhoods with less favorable market values, the neighborhoods that stand to gain the most from development incentives, have not seen the same growth. The blanket, the blanket abatement may be equally available, but it has not been equitable, it has not had an equitable impact across the city. We also know that even though high-value properties represent a small percentage of the total number of abated properties, they make up a significant portion of the total tax benefits. And in the last 20 years, properties with tax abatements received over $1 billion in tax benefits, and over half of those benefits go to a relatively small number of high-value properties. As a parent of children in the school district of Philadelphia, I cannot help but think how some of that revenue might otherwise have been used. Even if you are not a parent, anyone who opens the Inquirer can read about crumbling infrastructure and insufficient support for our schools, buildings that expose our children and our educators to toxins like lead and asbestos, and educators who try to meet our children's needs with limited resources. In a time of utmost need for our schools, it's imperative that there are clear and specific goals for any tax incentives, and that the city regularly reevaluates whether these goals are being met, and if the benefits of development outweigh the costs of foregone revenue. The changes to the abatement that are proposed in this bill are for one path for change, but other options exist, such as targeting the abatement to areas where reinvestment is needed most, capping the abatement to set limits on benefits for high-end properties, excluding revenue for the school district from the abatement, or ending it outright. With any number of ways to support our schools and city in front of you, I urge that you consider this a first step in creating a smart, targeted tax incentive program that supports all of our schools and all of our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Gail Loney, and I'm a block captain in a neighborhood in the fifth district. I'm not going to read my whole paper, I submitted it through email, but I will say this, I live in a community that I believe was and still is intentionally divested in, and the only investment is to rid the community that is there now for what I call the power brokers want it to be in the future. We constantly hear about the developers and construction industry and how they bring jobs, which is supposed to bring stability to our city, but no one is talking about the people factor, the jobs we as poor black people don't necessarily get or keep. Jobs for two years is fine, but a job for 25 years is better. Education is not fine, the playing field is not level. Your zip code should not determine anything about you other than this is the area you happen to live in right now, but somehow it does. This has to end. The abatement is meant to bring business in, and that is what it is doing, but at what cost, when you have neighborhoods that are experiencing development on steroids, back hoes, blocked streets, dirty air, noise pollution, and then once built, no air, no light, and in some cases, no respect for your neighbor? While developers are building $500,000 to $800,000 homes in communities that the people that, that the people there can't afford, and mega apartment buildings for students, though everyone denies it, are being built, those that have been there through drug wars, gang wars, are still suffering through construction wars, only to be on the verge of being taxed out of these homes. Elderly are being solicited by speculators calling and leaving cards at their homes on a daily basis, only to sell their homes they own and go where? Somewhere they have to pay rent, and then what happens? The rent goes up too high because the landlord wants to kick them out to do a paint job and to get more money for that place. Homeownership is something that has been, for me, made possible by my parents, who found a way to leave some wealth for my family, but everyone does not have that. This abatement could have been a really good thing for businesses and communities. Had our government kept up with redeveloping working-class neighborhoods and putting our tax dollars back to help those in need steadily over the years, we may not have become the largest poor city in the nation. However, since that did not happen, we are, we are, here we are with gentrification, workforce housing, and affordable housing that just keeps pushing homeownership further out of the reach of everyone, because none of those words speak to the truth that incomes of $40,000 or less can't pay for $300,000 housing or rents of $1,000 a month. In our neighborhoods, we see the developers, when they come to ask for variances and rezoning for large construction projects, we have had no say in developing. The RCOs were a mechanism for the people to have say in their communities, how they should look, how tall, wide, even color, but now in some cases, even the RCOs seem to be compromised, totally made up of well-connected developers, property managers for landlords and realtors. Even the plans can be totally in opposition to the look of the block, street, or neighborhood, but we are not a factor. Homes for the aging population is not a consideration unless for elderly. Notice, aging and elderly are not the same. Not much for disabled either. In a complex of 170 units, not one, not one for a disabled person, or five for low income, and maybe only five, and that's not every building. They come with the knowledge that the city already supports anything and everything they do in our neighborhoods, and sometimes the outright arrogance is evident because they wear it well. Since they support our officials, our officials support them, and when we oppose, we are just, you know, we are just in the way, rabble-rousers who don't even live in the neighborhood, which is what they would like to believe, but that's, that's just, but that's... which is what they would like to believe, but that's, that's just, but that's just it. We do live in the neighborhood, but you don't know that because you think our neighborhoods are made up of all the same types of people. Everyone does not scream running from the neighborhood because they have a little success. Everyone in these neighborhoods is not a drug dealer or is uneducated. To the contrary, our neighborhoods are made up of firefighters, teachers, bus drivers, retired teachers, business owners, just to name a few. We look out, share, and care for one another. We help each other, being there in their time of need. There are young adults and the elderly, and they are not always at odds. We have block clubs, clean our streets, and care about our homes. Our kids are well-behaved, smart, and educated. They travel and have dreams and deserve homes in the neighborhood of their choice. Please consider thoughtfully and wisely the scope of this and other bills and how and why they affect your constituencies. This bill should be held for further discussion and amended considering the many factors involved. I have only named a few, but 10 years is too long with no plan showing how the money finally received will be used for the betterment of our schools and assistance to our aging housing situation and property owners. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon, council members and my fellow Philadelphians in the room today. My name is Ron Whitehorn, I'm representing 215 People's Alliance. I've lived in this city for over 50 years and along with my wife, raised two children who attended public schools. I taught in those same schools for 23 years and own a home in the Long Crest section of northeast Philadelphia where we resided for over two decades. For many years, I've been actively campaigning for the repeal of the tax abatement. In my mind, it is a symbol of the warped priorities of those who hold political and economic power in our city. It is a tale of two cities. On the one hand, we have students who are disproportionately black, brown, and poor, and who have no choice but to go to under-resourced schools where their health is at risk because of the presence of lead, asbestos, and other toxic materials in aging, poorly maintained buildings. On the other hand, we have corporations that make billions in profits and developers of luxury condominiums who are the recipients of the 10-year tax abatement, a generous gift which confers no obligations on them. Those who benefit from this policy are disproportionately white and affluent. Ironically, many of those who purchase tax-abated properties in the gentrifying neighborhoods that surround the city center leave the city when their children reach school age.
Yeah.
Another dimension of this tale is the growing housing crisis in the city. Working-class homeowners see their property taxes rise. Market forces fueled by the abatement are squeezing renters as the pull of affordable housing declines. These consequences confront the members of council with an imperative to act. The current bill, while perhaps better than nothing, is woefully inadequate as a means of addressing the problem. We want an end to the tax abatement.
Exactly.
Not a piecemeal phasing out, and we want it to cover commercial properties.
Exactly, yes.
The notion that we need the abatement to create jobs for Philadelphians is a cruel hoax. Unlike in some other cities where abatements are linked to commitments to create jobs, low-income housing, or other social benefits, here recipients make no such guarantees. And while creating corporate office towers and luxury condos certainly generate some jobs, it is questionable that the economic benefits are equitably shared by Philadelphia residents. Of course, we need development, but the question is what kind? We want development that helps our schoolchildren develop their intellect, their imagination, and their ability to sell their labor in today's competitive markets. We want development that provides adequate housing for all our people. We want the revenue that ending the abatement will generate used as a down payment to fix our toxic schools and build affordable housing for working-class residents. Both these projects will generate jobs at the same time they create positive social benefits. Finally, we want to object to the lack of transparency and inclusion in crafting legislation to address this and related problems. I notice the developers seem to have regular access to council and their views are taken very seriously. We want to make it clear that we'll continue to press our demands, demands that we believe have broad support as indicated by the recent election. We hope regardless of the verdict on this legislation, council will revisit these issues in next year's sessions and hear the voices of the residents of our city. Thank you.
Good evening, Tiffany Green, Concerned Citizens of Point Breeze. Um, I want to start off with the fact that I, I think that this particular proposal, it, I mean, this bill is a fake-out. And it's a fake-out because the fact of it is, is that it's still a 10-year tax abatement. You're still providing these people. And my concern is that we're sitting here with council, many of who, with all due respect, have stated and fought for children on many levels, but yet voted for to accelerate permits for developers in many of our areas, 17 to zero. For me, that's a hip, being hypocritical in many, many ways, but let's get down to the details because the city of Philadelphia is not losing any money. You get your money off of the transfer fees upfront. So when you get your money off the transfer fees upfront, the 10-year tax abatement, you're not really losing any money at all. So the point of it is, is when you have condominiums like 500 Walnut Street, and you have the Laurel, which has from 26th to the 52nd floor, all condominiums starting from $2 million to $15 million, and they're all getting 10-year tax abatements with no particular cap at all, you're making a lot of money off of those transfer fees that's coming in upfront. So the question is, and then you have, not only that, you have the highest, $17.85 million condominium was sold at 500 Walnut Street that received a 10-year tax abatement. I mean, what are we saying here? It's like, for what I'm saying, this is a fake-out because of the fact that when you have the 10, when you get the transfer fees, what are you doing with the money? If it's not going to our schools, then where's the money going to? Well, let's talk about where the money is going to. The money is, according to Alan Greenberg back in 2009, you have to have places and new events for newcomers to come in. So who helped, was the allegedly money, $15 million was put towards fixing up Adilworth Plaza? Another $25 million allegedly was given towards the gallery to fix that up. Who fixed up Penn's Landing? You're fixing up Love Park. So let's talk about how you are directing your money and everything, and then you want to sit here and say that you care about our children. You see them in dirty Lundown School, you see them with asbestos, but yet you're sprucing up your own house. It's like you at your house and you, you're wearing new clothes, but your house is falling down, you know what I mean? So the thing about it is, is let's not fake the community out. This tax abatement needs to be put on, it needs to go. It needs to even go down to three years, three years. Councilman Good, Councilman Good did the numbers on it, I don't quite have it, so I'm not going to quote him, but the thing about it is, is that at this point, it needs to go to even down to three years, 150 and 25, and you're out, or it needs to be ended at this particular point. Because if you continue on, you're just really running everybody else into the ground. The homestead is also not real because we're being taxed as like the, uh, Councilman O. You're assessing us, so we have people who started out at 50, but now they're up to 80, then they're up to 125, 170, so if you assess us and reassess us at 170 and take off $40,000, we at 130. You reassess us at $200,000, you take off 40, we at 160. So the homestead is really not helping because you allowing them to continue to build this new construction, you continue to give them a 10-year tax abatement, and then you continue to reassess us, and then you want to sit here and say that you are helping, you care about the poor, you care about the children and all this stuff, but yet you are continually voting for new zoning code, new policies where you are giving developers, oh, different bonuses. If they do a green roof, they're allowed to do, get 10 extra units and a luxury apartment at what's going, who knew that? That wasn't on the poster boards when the planning commission came down to us and said they want to do mixed housing. You say you're doing mixed housing, mixed income, but you're not doing mixed housing and mixed income down center city. When it come down here, they get an exclusion if they give a little money to the housing department, but at that particular point, it's no mixed housing, it's only mixed housing in the black community and the black and poor community, but it's not mixed housing, mixed income in these luxury apartments like the Laurel and 500 Walnut Street, and we can go all the way down to all the money that you're pulling in from the transfer fees. So I think that this really need to be put on hold, and if you're gonna have a real conversation, then have a real conversation because our children are suffering at this particular, with dirty schools, dirty schools, and at this point, I feel as though that we've been at this for a long time. We are really, our, Philadelphia is really have, we are two different, we have two different towns. We have poor, poor, and upper enscom, income, and you're catering to the newcomers and you're leaving the low income on the back burner. So what, so what are you, which way you're going? And you're getting transfer fee, and then you take, one building, one developer gets a 10-year tax abatement, and he can then transfer to 200 units, a 10-year tax abatement. So then with the 200 units, you're still getting money off the transfer fees upfront, you know? Because some of our new residents tell us these things, so that's how we know these things. But the thing about it is, if you're making money off a $300,000 house, and let's say you have seven, you're making $17,000 transfer fee, you're getting the money. So where is the money? Where is the money? Because you're getting the money upfront. That's the bottom line. And so this 10-year tax abatement is nothing, is necessarily in. And if somebody pays $17 million and got a 10-year tax abatement, then you know, at this point, we all need to go to the drawing, back to the drawing board.
Good afternoon to the council and, well, President Clark is not sitting right there, but good afternoon to him anyway. Um, my name is Diane Hamilton Mitchell. For the last 55 years, I have lived in the 1300 block of South 15th Street. Um, the first-time grandmother, and I'm hoping that, and within the next, the next 20 years, that she'll be able to maintain my home that was given to me. Right here, I'm holding up, um, a printout that Burschaw Halfaway sent me, starting with a house that started at $130,000 up to $775,000, and they're not paying taxes. And it's 85 houses. I decided, since I retired from the school system, I refuse to be a realtor because I refuse to go in my neighborhood and go on the computer and look for houses that are backed up in their taxes, and that's what some of these developers are doing and realtors. I have a folder here, this is a folder that I keep account of all the realtors and developers are calling me to sell my house and my neighbors. I own a, I am on a fixed income of $990, and I survive off the grace of God. That's what I survive off, and not just me, a lot of people. I can't believe that Philadelphia has allowed developers to come in here and take our homes from us. They're not paying taxes for 20 years? 20 years, I might not be here. We're, we're not guaranteed anything, but this needs to stop. We're not, this is not brotherly love anymore. This is called, where's the money? When you have, when I, I had to give up my car because I had no place to park. I have to pay $20, no, $35 a year to park in front of my door, so I gave up my car. And my slogan is, if I pay property tax, I should be able to park in front of my door. Right now, the problem with the school system with this asbestos is out of hand. We all knew what was going on. If a house was built in 1915, like my house was built, and we got the asbestos out of our basement. Right now, my, my sister worked at Benjamin Franklin High, she's coughing because she might be a victim like the young lady at Meredith School was, okay? Just, excuse me, the tax abatement is getting out of hand. You have people knocking on your door, taking pictures of your house, going on the internet. Here's a picture of my house. A picture of my house. How dare you violate me? And I know we have an open policy that all this information is on philly.gov, but listen, when they call me and ask me for $100,000 for my house, you can't buy my dream, you can't buy my history, you can't buy my home. Councilman, I'm begging you, I'm begging you, let's end this abatement. We gotta end it now because what's gonna happen is gonna happen to all of us. Maybe some of you guys can afford a house that's $750,000, but I can't. I pay my taxes. I do my duty. I'm a block captain. Um, we don't, we connect with one another in our neighborhood. You took the neighborhood that was South Philly, now we're New Bold and Center City South and, um, Point Breeze. You took the neighborhood and you divided, and when you divided, that's when the racism starts. We have new neighbors that piss in front of my door with their dogs. They don't want to speak. I have to speak to them before they can give me eye contact, headphones are on. This is situation right here brings in racism, and we don't need that. If we're gonna be brotherly love, sisterly affection, we better do it now. Let's end this tax abatement. Let's end it now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Ben Connors, Christopher Summers, Chris Johnson, and Andrea Moselli, if that is correct. Uh, we will, we are gonna move to a time limit, two minutes. Because we still have a lot of public comment and several panels ahead of us. And thank you all for being here and hanging in here so long. You're Mason.
Okay.
If you could start off by stating your name for the record, and you may proceed.
Yes, good afternoon, I'm Andrea Mosell, and I've lived in Mount Airy for over 40 years. As a parent of three grown children who graduated from Philadelphia schools and a grandparent of a three-and-a-half-year-old who lives in South Philly, I am here as a believer in great public education for all Philadelphia's children. My experience as a mental health professional with a background in child development and early childhood education reinforces what every parent and grandparent in this room already knows. Children and staff are entitled to go to school in safe and healthy buildings. As a member of Power Interfaith and the Our City, Our Schools Coalition, I've been working with parents, teachers, students, and community members for the last three years to end the abatement and return the resulting real estate tax dollars to our schools. As many council members who we've visited know, we have studied the facts about abatement and the findings are clear. The abatement takes desperately needed funds away from our schools, land, and affordable housing, and keeps them in the pockets of wealthy developers and builders. Despite the encouragement that many of you gave us in these conversations, you chose to work behind closed doors to create the legislation introduced last week. We see this bill as a first step in addressing the issue and returning some of the money to the School District of Philadelphia, and as such, we will support a yes vote. But the phase-out of the abatement you've proposed is very gradual, and our children cannot wait the eight to 10 years it will take to bring back enough of the lost revenue to begin to make a significant impact. And they certainly cannot wait the five years proposed by the building trades unions for the phase-out to even begin. Each week, we learn about more unacceptable toxic conditions at schools across the district. We will be back in January to ask you how you will find a way to bring the necessary funds to our schools this coming year to end the toxic conditions. We expect you to recognize this as an emergency and to move with all urgency. We need you to do what your constituents elected you to do and take a stand for Philadelphia's children. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Summers. I'm a realtor in the city of Philadelphia, and I'm the current president. I'm a realtor in the city of Philadelphia, and I'm the current president of the Greater Philadelphia Association of Realtors. With over 3,000 hard-working members, GPAR has served as the voice of real estate in Philadelphia since 1908. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding Bill Number 190944. GPAR does not support the bill as it is written currently. While we understand the intent and efforts behind the bill, we would like to offer amendments to the bill and the reasons behind them. We would like to request this committee to consider keeping the 100% tax abatement for new construction for the first four years of the 10-year tax abatement with a gradual decline, as mentioned in our detailed testimony. This will reduce the full value of the tax abatement from 10 years to seven years while making sure the real estate market is not destabilized because of a radical change and maintaining the incentive for home buyers to purchase a house. We would also request the effective date for the enforcement of the bill be January 1st, 2021, which will provide some, some time for transactions to work through the paperwork in relation to permits and zoning processes. Additionally, it will help in predict, 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 in predicting the market forces, which is already witnessing a downward turn. Our proposed amendments will lessen the shock wave that may be created through amending this tax abatement policy. Our primary concern is the homeowners. It is important to make sure the homeowners and consumers are protected from any drastic change that could negatively affect their ability to obtain a stable source of funding for mortgages for concluding the process of buying a house. We also need to create more certainty and provide, provide more time among title companies in calculating the escrow amount for the impending payment of real estate tax. A specific real-life example, I would encourage people to drive by tonight or tomorrow or anytime, is a project at Frankfurt and Lehigh, where the city was collecting, maybe if they were collecting it, around $10,000 a year of real estate taxes. Now it's currently $50,000, and over the 10 years, it will end up being 700,000 in real estate taxes at the 10th year. This has also provided over $2 million, $2 million in transfer taxes. These sales are in the $300,000 range, created tons of jobs with 155 homeowners and occupants. We can safely say that without the tax abatement, this would still be an abandoned used car lot today. Thus, we look forward to working with city council to make the bill work for everyone and ensure the economy of the city of Philadelphia is not negatively affected by changing the tax abatement dramatically. Once again, we do not support Bill Number 190944 as it is currently drafted. Thank you for your consideration of the thoughts expressed by GPAR and myself as president of the association.
Thank you. Next, uh, next speaker, state your name for the record, and you may proceed.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm Ben Connors, president of the General Building Contractors Association. In, uh, in consideration now that wouldn't be done in time for the current deadline for this project, those costs would not necessarily be borne by developers, they'd be borne by the small business owners that will eventually build those projects, hopefully. Uh, additionally, we'd like the consideration, uh, to change the amendment so that it's 100% abatement for the first five years and declining in percentages in the past, in the next five. Again, our industry in particular, when getting a construction loan to build a project, uh, the first five years are critical for, critical for qualifying for that loan. So, uh, reducing the abatement right in the front is going to make it less likely, uh, some of the projects that currently qualify for a loan will get it in the future. Uh, in conclusion, uh, over the past 128 years, GBCA members built this city. Uh, we built our schools, our government buildings, our offices, and many of the apartment and condo buildings that our citizens live in. Uh, and we want to make sure Philadelphia succeeds. Uh, so we do want to point out, we applaud city council for not seeking to modify the commercial industrial abasment, abatements. Uh, what the city needs more than anything else is jobs, and these abatements are critical to incentivize future growth in jobs in the city. Uh, so we hope council will, will support the proposed amendments, um, I've discussed, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks. Chris? If you could state your name for the record, and you may proceed.
Yes, hello. My name is Chris Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of my testimonial. So I'm here, guess, to test my, more so to tell my story. Um, in 2017, I, me, my fiance, my two kids, were renters, like a lot of people in Philadelphia. We rented a house in Yorktown, a three, a three-bedroom, one-bath driveway, which is a great house. But 2017, we said, this was going to be, this will be our last rental property, just because the expenses were killing us. It was $15 per month, plus utilities, we were looking at about $2,000 per month just for it to rent. So we buckled down, we moved into an area where we didn't want to be, but the rent was very low. So we lived there for about 16 to 18 months to save money, build our credit, reduce our debt, and we started home shopping during that 16 to 18-month span. We looked in Jersey, we looked in Delaware, and of course, we looked in Philadelphia because we were both born and raised here. Our kids were born here, and they go to school here. So, as looking in Jersey and Delaware, some of you might know, they offer, also offer a tax abatement, which is five years. And then we came to, back to Philadelphia, and the Philadelphia, uh, agent also said they offer tax abatements as well. So we said, why not stay in Philadelphia where we are from? And they have a 10-year tax abatement, which was better beneficial to us. So during that time, we, you know, hit the ground hard, looking for a perfect opportunity for us during that 18-month span when we looked, lived into the new rental property. Um, mind you, it was a duplex, it was a two-bedroom, and it was four of us. So during the time of home searching in Philadelphia, like I said, we had a great opportunity to come up, a new construction house in Philadelphia, some of the areas that you guys probably live in. And like I said, we hit the ground hard, and we just did what we, what was necessary to acquire a new construction property. We didn't want a renovation, we didn't want an older home, we wanted a new construction where we could raise our kids and they could live in Philadelphia. We didn't want to live in New Jersey, we didn't want to live in Delaware, just because we work here, we play here, and our friends and family are here. So we didn't want to take our money to another state, another city, that will benefit somebody else, as kids are just a city. So after all that's said and done, we settled on our house last December, actually December 18th of last year. Um, so our year anniversary is coming up already on a new construction house. Yes, 10-year tax abatement is applied to the house, and we are benefiting from the abatement. And we didn't have, we don't make a ton of money, but like I said, we reduced our tax, we reduced our income, well, reduced our expenses, increased our income, reduced our debt, and we were able to acquire a new bill with a 10-year tax abatement. And now my daughter and my other son could be Philadelphians, just like the rest of us. So that's our story, and we, we benefited off the tax abatement, basically, so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Our next panel, we're going to call Ming Yu Wee, Kristi Clark, and Boris Kaplan.
Hi, my name is Ming Wee. I'm a furnace high school graduate, a current CCP student, a youth organizer with H&amp;M United. I, and I live in, in the second district. I'm here to push city council to vote yes on the first step on ending the tax abatement, but this is not enough. We must end the tax abatement now. I live in through the damage of the school budget cut that happened year after year. My school ceiling leak, my teacher will put bucket on the floor to collect rainwater. While we will expect to go on learning like this was normal. The pin on the, on the wall appears, many classes were missing teacher. I almost did not make, make it to, uh, to college because my one of college counselor have too many students. I was, I was lucky I had help from AU and other friends, other were not as lucky. I was shocked by the school conditions. I find here the richest country in the world. Three years later, those conditions still not changed. Over the summer, I work with 27 youth who interview over 400 Philadelphia public school student about their school conditions. Here is what we hear. There is a shortage of tables and chairs for students. The ceiling also have cracked, which sometimes water will leak through. Student Northeast High School. The, the ceiling pin, pin will fill on the student and the table, the table and the, and distract then during class. Student where Washington Elementary School. It's been, it's becomes too hard to concentrate when classroom don't have air conditioning. Student Northeast High School. 92% of student will interview report damaged facilities. More than half of student report that, report a lack of air conditioning. 78% report lack of teaching, teaching materials. In addition, half of, half of the student have had, had asked interpreter in their school. How is this possible? Be ending the tax abatement, we have a real chance to invest in our youth. Last year, Plumb Roof Filling, Ben Franklin, and SRA were school closed, were closed because of damage, dangerous conditioning, conditions. Period Elementary just make headline, why, why won't city council push the health and safety for our young people first? With this current bill on the payment, we will also no money next year.
Sir, you got time. Can you wrap it up, please?
And let my money for year to come. This is why, in the new year, we will continue to push city council to end the, end the payment. We will push to make sure we are part of review process of the bill, and we will push to see that this money is returned to community that need, need the most to face dangerous condition in school for, for affordable housing.
Sir, sir, I need you to. Your time, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Hello, my name is Kristi Clark. I work at the Women's Community Revitalization Project. We're a developer that also does community organizing, and we're here to testify in support of Bill Number 190944, the amendments to the tax abatement. Um, we are also part of the Philly Coalition for Affordable Communities, a coalition of over 60 organizations from around the city. One reason our coalition supports this legislation is because we stand with our allies in the Our City, Our Schools Coalition and the Alliance for a Just Philadelphia, because we know that healthy, well-funded public schools impact all of us, and the changes in this bill will create additional resources for our schools. I'll also add that as a public school parent, it's personal to me. Additionally, the Philadelphia Coalition for Affordable Communities has been working since 2014 to win additional funding for the Housing Trust Fund to expand affordable, accessible housing. We support the proposed changes in the tax abatement because we know it's time for Philadelphia to address the harsh impacts that development, specifically market rate development, has had on neighborhood affordability. I'm talking about the displacement that's affecting too many families, specifically black and brown families, forcing them to leave their communities. We hope to see legislation introduced by council in the new year that would ensure a fair portion of the money that starts coming back to our city would support the preservation and production of affordable, accessible homes. Housing security is necessary to address poverty, and for many Philadelphians, that starts with having affordable, accessible rental housing or access to home repair or adaptive modification grants to keep homeowners stably housed. With the new city revenue that will be generated, hopefully, starting in 2021, we are asking you and council to add money to the Housing Trust Fund to expand the programs we know work. We're asking folks to vote yes on today's bill and to make a commitment to use the revenue coming back to the city to further fund our Housing Trust Fund. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, Boris Kaplan, Paul Stanky, and Mark Brown. Mark Brown. Mark here. Boris. Okay, it's not here. Beth McConnell. And let's see, Walter's not here, right? Walter Spence is not.
Aileen Callahan.
Huh? Heather's not here?
Aileen Callahan.
Heather's not here?
Heather always spoke.
Oh, okay. Uh, wait a minute, hold on a second. I'll make sure, uh, Aileen Callahan. That's you? Yeah, thank you. Oh.
I got this.
All right. It's okay. Wait a minute, hold on. Everybody's anxious today. I know it's late, you want to get out of here, I know, I know. I'm sorry. I understand, trust me. Uh, you guys self-select who goes first.
Okay, well, uh, thank you, Council President Clark, and the members of the committee as a whole for your consideration of my testimony today. My name is Paul Stanky, and I'm executive director of the Preservation Alliance for Greater Philadelphia. I am here to testify on behalf of the alliance in support of the tax abatement reform bill in front of the committee today. Despite a wealth of architectural resources in this city, a collection on par with or greater than any American city, we have had few, if any, programs at the local level to incentivize their maintenance and reuse. Lack of incentives was a core focus of the Historic Preservation Task Force. While the impact of the tax abatement in stimulating construction and development activity over the past two decades is clear, the tax abatement has also been a catalyst for the destruction of historic buildings in pursuit of larger, taller, denser, and fully abated new construction projects. This bill, by gradually scaling back the abatement for a new residential construction while preserving it for rehabilitation projects, will create a new incentive for historic preservation in Philadelphia. This is something we haven't had since the first version of the tax abatement was enacted in 1997, when it will create a new incentive for historic preservation in Philadelphia. This is something we haven't had since the first version of the tax abatement was enacted in 1997, when it was available solely for rehabilitation projects. The passage of this bill you are considering today will once again give rehabilitation priority. We believe this is how it should be in a city in which around 70% of structures date from prior to 1940. We must also remember that rehabilitation also creates construction jobs and economic development, which our city must continue to foster and promote. We have two other ideas that we think are worthy of your consideration. Each would further incentivize the rehabilitation of historic buildings. One is zero basis assessment, which was a recommendation of Mayor Kenny's Task Force on Preservation, which means for rehab projects, the abatement should be applied to the full improvement value, treating rehabilitation as if it were new construction. The second is demolition prohibition of any building that's recognized on the National Register of Historic Places or as part of a national historic district. In sum, the Preservation Alliance supports the passage of this bill, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, council. My name is Aileen Callahan. I am the mother of a six-year-old boy who is a kindergartner at Richmond School. I am a steering committee member of Reclaim Philadelphia, and I am here to stand in solidarity with the Our City, Our Schools Coalition. During the last four months in my community, I have knocked, I bottomed line the operation to knock on 15,000 doors in my neighborhoods. We had 2,000 conversations, and 99.9% of those individuals wanted a complete and full end to the 10-year tax abatement. So that specifically is 1,990 people out of 2,000 claimed that they want a full and complete end to the 10-year tax abatement. Our community in the River Wards, which is Port Richmond, Kensington, Old Richmond, Fishtown, kind of, we are a stronger base of stakeholders than econ consultants. We need to begin to listen to our communities when we're making choices. And I was very stressed to see, like, the lack of transparency that was going on in this process. We are very clear that the reason why this legislation was put forward at such haste today is because our communities have been organizing directly to end the 10-year tax abatement. We will continue to fight this come January. This is going to be the very first step. And in this first step, we need to deeply consider this is not just a financial crisis, but a deep and real moral crisis in our community. We are the poorest metropolis in the nation, and the way that we organize money in Philadelphia clearly shows who holds the power in our city. And those are the commercial real estate developers. They sit in our elected offices. They sit behind the closed doors in the Democratic Caucus, and they weigh in on our legislation. Specifically, BIA got their input on the legislation when they decided to kill the bill for the cap of homes exceeding $400,000 before this bill could get introduced on November 21st. We must consider our communities and the impact this has on our schools. My son attends Richmond School. There is asbestos in most of the third-grade classrooms. My son is not in a safe environment, and he deserves that. On path to ending the 10-year tax abatement is the only way to secure that poor and working children in Philadelphia are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon, or now evening, Council President and the rest of members of city council. My name is Heather Atkinson, and I am a resident of Philadelphia. I am a Democratic Committee person, the mother of a second grader, a former teacher, a Temple graduate, and a human being who believes we should place more value on the well-being of our children than on the bank accounts of developers. Philadelphia has the money to address the emergency that is plaguing our school buildings. It's an emergency that is blamed for endangering teachers and children and tragically for dooming a life. What we need to save our schools are the right priorities, and we need the heroes to carry them out. This is your chance to be a hero. Until this year, my son attended Meredith Elementary School, whose teacher Leah DeRusso has been diagnosed with mesothelioma and given one year to live. School district records show that her classroom had a history of damaged asbestos. It was marked high priority for repair in 2015, 2016, 2017, but nothing was done about it until she received her death sentence. As you can imagine, this has caused students and teachers to worry if they will be next. Parents cannot sleep at night. Meredith Elementary, a blue-ribbon school, is not the only school in Philadelphia that has been endangering teachers and students. In fact, this problem is rampant across our entire city. How is it possible in the United States of America that we cannot provide every child a school that is free of toxic lead and asbestos? We can, we should, and we must. I live in a neighborhood where there are million-dollar homes who have tax abatements. People are in bidding wars, paying over asking price. And we tell the wealthiest of our citizens, hey, even though our schools are making our children sick and many who live in poverty cannot pay taxes, you don't have to pay for 10 years either. You are literally robbing from our most vulnerable citizens and giving the money to people who don't need it. This must stop. This makes no sense. Meanwhile, the school district is in a state of extreme emergency, and without the funding to completely remediate all of the affected schools, teachers and children will remain in danger. Ultimately, the city will pay, both in lawsuits and by losing revenue when the same people lured by tax abatements flee for safe suburban schools. Our leaders have failed our children and their teachers, and I'm calling on each of you to be a hero, to step up, to do what it takes to swiftly make our schools safe. The bill being considered does not do enough to quickly address the current crisis. In fact, students in fourth grade or higher will have graduated before it provides enough money to fix unsafe schools. Constituents across the city have showed up in record numbers to elect Kendra Brooks and others who campaigned on ending the tax abatement. Our citizens have made their voices heard through rallies, call-ins, op-eds, lobbying, and meetings. The people have spoken. I knocked on my constituents' doors, and I've met privately with some of you. Philadelphia residents and many of you want to do more. Please do more. We should not starve our schools and neighborhoods to prioritize developers. Please get your priorities straight. Be the heroes our city truly deserves.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, Council President, other members of council. My name is Beth McConnell, the Policy Director at the Philadelphia Association of Community Development Corporations, PACDC. We support Bill Number 190944. We do urge the council amendment bill to extend the effective date to the summer of 2021. This would give affordable housing developers time to incorporate a modified abatement schedule into their financing for future projects and would allow us to not negatively affect projects that are currently awaiting awards but whose budgets are not easily changed. Otherwise, we firmly believe that tax abatement reform is long overdue. It is inequitable for Philadelphia taxpayers to subsidize profitable market rate development that does not need subsidy and is benefiting households that do not need help securing affordable homes. We had asked council to consider an amendment that would continue the abatement for affordable housing development, which is deed restricted, particularly for rental development to serve households between 20% and 60% area median income. We do understand it's the position of the Law Department that the Pennsylvania Constitution's Uniformity Clause prevents us from doing that. But we're still able to support this bill without that amendment because we have been assured by the Council President's office and by the Kenny administration that they will work with affordable housing practitioners on each project to make sure that low-income housing tax credit developments that do depend on the tax abatement as a form of operating subsidy will continue to be developed and supported and subsidized in other ways. We do estimate that a typical low-income housing tax credit project, the impact of scaling back the abatement could be anywhere from $42,000 to $50,000 over a 10-year period, based on the number of units and projects that we develop each year. You know, that would require some additional subsidies of about $390,000 a year to make these projects whole. Those are resources that the city of Philadelphia has and we believe can be well-deployed. And the abatement reform will still allow these projects to move forward. In closing, want to applaud council and the administration for working to boost investment in the Housing Trust Fund so significantly. And we do hope that out of the abatement reform, additional resources that are due to the city could go to support and develop more affordable homes. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your great work you guys do. We really appreciate your focus on affordability in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Dong Lee. Antoine Little. And who we have? Lena Smith. That's the answer, yeah. Who's the other person? Lena. Lena Smith. Lena Smith.
Good evening, my name is Young Lee. Youth Project Director at VietLeet and also a homeowner. I'm here to talk about a structural violence that our students going through every day going to school as someone working with high school students and also as a product of the public school system in Philly. I'm a Southland High alum, and throughout my three years going there, my friends and I experienced racial harassment from others in hostile environments so normalized that no adult did anything to change it. On December 3, 2009, exactly two days, 10 years ago, things came to a tipping point where over 30 Asian immigrant students were beaten up over the course of one school day, while the school and school district once again did nothing. This time, myself and over 50 other students came together with adult support to demand accountability and identify root causes of the problems, which we saw as the SRC at that time and the school district, who let it happen through normalization of and participation in structural violence, underfunded schools and underpaid staff, and lack of clear directions and leadership from school district on ensuring safety for all students. And today, on the 10th anniversary of what had happened, I'm speaking in front of you to once again highlight systemic violence that our public school students and staff have had to go through, one that has been ignored for far too long, but one that we totally have the power to change right now. For most two years, VietLeet has worked with students from finesse and other funded, underfunded schools across the city to fight for additional resources to fix crumbling school conditions like lead and asbestos. We also join a coalition of organizations working across issues involving land, schools, and housing to collectively demand the end to the 10-year tax abatement, which we know is a common element to detriment that black, brown, and working-class communities are facing. For over 20 years, this generous tax break has accelerated the loss of black and brown community farms and gardens, stolen millions of dollars from public schools, and replaced truly affordable housing with luxury condos. This is such structural systemic violence aiming at the most marginalized in the city. Thanks to the organizing efforts from many organizations the past three years, today we finally have a chance to do something right by passing the amendment to 10-year tax abatement, which we still think is really inadequate and was introduced behind closed doors without people's feedback. We know city council has looked to the wealthy BIA, who benefits the most from the tax abatement as a major force behind any decision on it. And even with such modest changes to the abatement, from which we won't see any impact into 2021, the BIA is once again using the political and capital powers to pressure the city council further to strip down the amendment. Why do we continue to normalize this kind of structural violence and prioritize economic growth for the wealthy, over land security, healthier schools, and affordable housing for working class? And I'm going to finish my statement. With that in mind, on behalf of students I work with, I'm here to demand the following. One, pass the amendment to the tax abatement right now and as is, without stripping it down any further, as suggested by the BIA, but know that we will continue to fight to end it. Two, create a democratic process for radical inclusion of the communities most impacted in this matter, including the processes of reviewing the impacts of the abatement on our communities. And three, create an emergency fund to address the crumbling infrastructure of Philly public schools and pressure the school district to set aside any additional funding towards this issue. 10 years ago, we all had this saying, we had the power to make change, and we did. We will continue to fight moving forward to end the tax abatement, to take back the resources we deserve and to truly make Philly a city for all of us and not just the wealthy.
All right, this is what you can do.
Thank you, because you give the developer 30 minutes to speak.
Okay, that's cool. And if anybody wants to leave their testimony, we will make sure that it's in the record. So we can leave it and make sure all of, the entirety.
Good evening. Thank you to Councilman Clark and this body for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lena Smith. I'm a campaign manager for Clean Water Advocacy at Penn Future, interjecting a little bit of a different dialogue into this debate. Penn Future is leading the transition to a clean energy economy in Pennsylvania and beyond. We're protecting our air, water, and land and empowering citizens to build sustainable communities for a future generation. Penn Future supports this first step to amend the 10-year tax abatement. However, we believe there is still work that needs to happen. These initial changes being discussed are just the start of an ongoing debate that we look forward to participating in with the incoming elected city council members. While we know that now is not the time, in the future, city council should prioritize abatements for improvements that advance the city's green stormwater infrastructure and climate change goals. I'd like to commend this body and particularly council persons Reynolds, Brown, and Green for the work that has gone into incentivizing development that addresses the reality of the climate crisis and contributes to greening our city. At a time when global temperatures are increasing and we're seeing an increase in storms, flooding, and climate disasters, Philadelphia must take all measures to advance emissions reductions and climate resiliency and adaptation measures. Green City Clean Waters is one of those programs that is building green stormwater infrastructure to address the city's combined sewer overflows and creates multiple community benefits for green jobs, green space, increasing safety, and addressing climate adaptation and resiliency. The city is required to manage runoff from 9,564 acres across the city's combined sewer area. GSI development on private property, which offers huge opportunities to create cost-effective green acres, is essential to achieving Green City Clean Waters' goals. In the first five years, green acres, as a result of private or public-private investment, accounted for 1,154 green acres. Almost 80% of the total 1,450 green acres achieved. These goals allow the city to accomplish their green acres goals under the consent order at a cheaper price than it would have cost the Water Department to build equivalent projects on public property. From the beginning, PWD understood the necessity of private investment for the program to succeed and encourage private investment, but barriers to maximizing this investment persist. The city can rely on development incentives like a tax abatement program to expand incentives already in place and accelerate the implementation of GSI on private property. If Philadelphia is to continue with tax abatements, the city must prioritize properties that advance the city's green stormwater infrastructure and climate change goals. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I first want to start off by saying, I'm sorry, Antoine Little. I apologize. I want to start off by first thanking Councilwoman Gim, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilwoman Blackwell for standing with the children and the parents of TM Pierce Elementary School as we stood up against the district with this horrific situation that's going on, not just at TM Pierce, but at all these Philadelphia public schools. You know, we heard from the developers. We've heard from activists. We've heard from some parents. And one of the things that I was taught early on when I began in my union career, I was told that no matter what argument you make, you should always be able to put a human side to every argument. We can sit here, we can talk about dollars, we can talk about cents, but let's talk about the human side. This is the human side. Last year at TM Pierce Elementary School, my son was burnt by a faulty electrical outlet in the school, received a dime-sized burn on his rear end. Let's talk about the human side. TM Pierce, Pratt Arnold, LP Hill, Meredith, SLA, Benjamin Franklin, and countless other schools have asbestos in these schools that our children attend on a daily basis. Let's talk about the human side. Let's talk about the teacher from Meredith who contracted cancer while working in this school. The human side. Let's talk about a staff person at TM Pierce who just recently retired after having 30-plus years of service with the school district, who was in TM Pierce her entire career, who does not know if she'll come down with some type of cancerous disease. So when we talk about the human side to things, we're going to have a conversation and say, the abatement must end. And why do I say that? You said something early on, Councilman, Council President, excuse me, in your remarks earlier. You said there are a lot of people who want more done, not just this version of the bill. I'm one of them. The abatement must end. And why does the abatement must end? Because at some point, this is the human side, at some point, every child that's in that district will either be sitting in these chairs or be somewhere as an adult, and we will be long gone. And they may possibly contract something that none of us will be able to explain to them. And then what do we do? We say, we don't know. So what do we do? If we end the 10-year tax abatement, that those millions and millions of dollars that are not going into the school district will go into the district. Dr. Heit said that it will cost $50 million. $50 million to go in every school and abate it from lead and asbestos. $50 million. How much money are we losing annually to the abatement? TM Pierce and one other school will now receive new schools. They will now receive new schools. But why can't all the schools be rehabbed? Why can't all of the schools, the ones especially like TM Pierce that was built in 1909, be torn down and rebuilt? I understand it's, you know, the money is not there. But it is there. Because when those developers are walking away with their pockets full of money, my three children that attend three children that attend TM Pierce and every other child in this district are suffering. They're suffering. I'm gonna end with this. A system cannot fail those it was never meant to protect. W E B Du Bois. This is a body of people who are responsible for taking care of the men and women and the children of the city of Philadelphia. This afternoon, I charge every person in this room to do the right thing and stand up for our children, stand up for our children, and end the 10-year tax abatement.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, sir. Next up, we have a new list. Robin Lipp. David, having trouble with his hand ready. David Moscotello. And Lynn Robinson. Is your, sir, your name?
Robin Lipp.
You're Rob Lipp. And we need David Moscotello. David here? David's not here. Lena Robinson. Lena's not here. Barbara Capozzi. I saw Barbara earlier. She is, oh yeah, she is, alright. And what is this, LaFren? Oh, her friend. Oh, I'm sorry. Alright, and Jahad Ali. I saw Jahad. Where do you, there's Jahad.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Robin Lipp. I was a volunteer canvasser for Councilmember-elect Kendra Brooks in the Riverwards where I live. When I was out knocking on over 100 doors, ending the tax abatement was the issue that energized voters. Kendra Brooks campaigned and won on repealing the abatement now. I would urge the members of the council to respect the democratic process and the results of that election, and to take action on this issue when the new council members can be here to participate fully in discussions and cast their votes. I also happen to have a master's degree in public policy from the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. In preparation for today, I reviewed the reports that are publicly available online about the effects of the 10-year tax abatement. I saw only very weak evidence about how much development in this city has been caused by the abatement that would not have occurred without it, what the public benefits of any such development have been, and how those benefits have been distributed by income and by race. I would just point out that development is not an end in itself, and the public ought to know the costs and benefits of the abatement if you choose this path. I do urge the members of the council to support independent impact evaluations that consider distributive issues, so that the public can understand what the policy does, who benefits, and who loses. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name's Barbara Capozzi. I really couldn't even begin to summarize the false narratives that have taken place today. And whoever is really responsible for blaming the 10-year tax abatement for all the city's ills, it's just remarkable to me that anybody could even begin to believe that. I'd like the ability to submit my testimony in writing, because it was in detail and was coherent and did make sense, but if they're sitting here all day and hearing that the 10-year tax abatement is responsible for the poverty in this city, the disgraceful condition of the school district, which has been that way since the buildings were built, okay? And were the schools the paragons of virtue 20 years before the 10-year, when the 10-year tax abatement wasn't here? No, they were not. And I guarantee you today, if the 10-year tax abatement ended tomorrow, the school district would not improve. I think we all need to put our energy into seeing what the school district does for the $2.7 billion that they get a year, almost $3 billion, plus all the money they get from the dozens of advocacy groups like the Giving Circle, the Donors Choose, the Philadelphia Foundation, and all those other people like myself that contribute to the school district for projects for teachers, supplies for kids, et cetera, et cetera. So to equate the 10-year tax abatement with the conditions of the school district is really an easy, easy fix. It's so untrue. There's, I couldn't even begin to tell you the ways that it's not true. And anybody that has pushed this false narrative is gonna be exposed. Because when the 10-year tax abatement ends, or whatever way you choose to change that, the city isn't, the school district will not improve. I could almost guarantee that. Nobody has to read the studies, I'm sure nobody has, there's tons of studies. Let's just use common sense, the law of supply and demand. The more you have of something, the lower the prices. The more options you have, the more choices you have, the bigger the supply, the less the price. If we're concerned about affordable housing, it makes no sense to stop the vehicle that has contributed to the additional units that are in this city. The more units that are here, the more affordable the units are, the more options people have, the more people move back from New Jersey, the more people that are here that do have options can stay because they can find something new, and then someone can move into their home. So the more houses you have, the lower the price. That's what we all want. The city, the mayor's Housing Advisory Board, which I'm on and had 10,000 meetings, has a goal of 100,000 new units within the next 10 years. Now, how the hell is that gonna happen without a 10-year tax abatement? It's not. And the reason that the Housing Advisory Board wanted all those new additional units was to keep the prices down. Philadelphia is actually affordable. The 10-year tax abatement has taken the brunt of OPA, which is a disgrace, they're using computers that I threw out 20 years ago. I mean, it's a disgrace. In this day and age, it's very simple to find the value of a home. It's very simple. And I do agree that the homestead exemption should be increased, because it's one vehicle to soften the blow of the unequal assessments. As the community leader in my neighborhood for 30 years, I must have filled out hundreds of homestead exemptions. And the taxpayers do appreciate council for coming up with that simple, one form, one-page form to help them pay their taxes. All neighborhoods need that. But I would like the opportunity to submit my written comments, but again, it's a very false narrative to blame the 10-year tax abatement and rich developers who take huge risks for the poverty in the city and the condition of the school district. I'd like to ask them what they do with their $3 billion a year. I would.
Good afternoon, Councilor, it's always a pleasure to see you. As I always say when I see you, it's a blessing to God for me to see you today. My name is Jahad Ali, and I'm from southwest Philadelphia District Services. And for the record, I would like to say, I support this bill, and I just want to make one comment. This bill, people, we come down to this center, we all play different roles. You are elected officials sitting among the side, we, the citizens on this side, we come to give our opinion, and we're all entitled to our opinion, but we're not all entitled to a different set of facts. As a young man from Harvard pointed out, where are the studies? I'm old enough to remember when the tax abatement first started, and I remember them saying that the issue was gonna be, it was gonna create jobs, the construction jobs, the increase in business revenue tax, and all that. But what they didn't see was all, and this, we're talking about the residential part, what they didn't see was all the residential contractors that come in from out of town. So we don't get any benefit from that. And you cannot talk about real estate development, my, some of these speakers that come, they're young people. You cannot talk about real estate development without looking at the racial aspects of zoning and development that began in the 19th century. In fact, in 1919, when this whole movement started, when the FHA was put into existence, that was in 1934. And in 1934, that was authorized by President Roosevelt. And President Roosevelt authorized FHA to ensure home loans, so we could have mortgages, and the homeownership would become part of the American dream. But that was a part of American dream for everybody except who? In 1934, do you think that was? That was black people and people of color. In 1934, and this is, this is a fact of law, this is not conjecture, this is something that's referred to as de facto, as de jure segregation, meaning, de jure meaning that it's a part of legalized segregation to segregate. Oh, I'm just looking at you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I guess because you said it was, it was a false narrative, so I guess, well, it's not false, because I'm just presenting you with facts, and you're talking about opinion. But at the end of the day, I think council is doing the right thing. Council, at the end of the day, this history's going forward. We can look 20 years into the future and see what the decision was made. But when we look at development, the things that they talked about, employment, when we looked at residential development, we didn't see that. I'm in the construction field, we don't see that. We don't see jobs. When we talk about affordability of homes, a $400,000 home could be $2,000 a month. We don't see that. The only affordable housing that we see is housing that this council, council president and them enacted by assisting first-time homebuyers with $10,000. That's the affordable part. The rest of this stuff is all, it's all misdirection. Because the facts of, where are the reports to support everything they're saying? We just can't come down to, anecdotally, when you guys are making these decisions, you need facts. And you're on the right side of history going forward. It has to end. This is just a few developers, the real prominent developers, they knew it had to end sooner or later. Nothing goes on forever. So I think going forward, I think council's doing the right thing. I support whatever this council comes up with. I support the people that authorize this bill, because it's in moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate you. I believe that concludes the witness list. Is anyone else to testify? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, please come forward.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for waiting through a long meeting. I think the importance of the subject matter deserves it. My name is Aaron Wunsch, and I'm speaking on behalf of Repoint Philadelphia, a historic preservation advocacy group in the city. Demolition in the city of Philadelphia is at an all-time high. The recent Historic Preservation Task Force report explains how the current tax abatement financially incentivizes demolition of existing structures in favor of new construction. This may not be the intent, but it is the effect. Any proposed amendment to the abatement that fails to directly address this problem in our so-called World Heritage City is inadequate. Not only does the incentivized demolition destroy buildings and sites that make our city distinctive, it also undermines the neighborhoods and residents of this town. It undermines the very identity of these places. It also undermines neighborhood safety, and the problems stemming from the demolition of adjacent structures are on the rise and are increasingly well-documented. The tax abatement has loomed over Philadelphia for years as a source of controversy and discontent. Now, as we await the January arrival of newly-elected members in this legislative body, members who carry with them a voter's mandate to end or amend the abatement, council has opted to advance a hastily-formulated measure to address these concerns. Why now? A skeptic might see here an effort to end the abatement, the end debate on the issue before the incoming cohort has had a chance to weigh in. However, assuming the most public-spirited motives are in play, we can infer that the bill's sponsors believe they're taking an important first step toward reforming an outmoded law. That idea sounds reasonable, but it is misguided. If this bill passes, City Council will have given away its near-term ability to modify the abatement in a more substantive and democratic manner. Repoint Philadelphia respectfully requests that council members vote "no" on the current bill. Any amendment to the abatement must thoroughly consider the abatement's impact on our city's historic neighborhoods and sites, along with key considerations such as school funding, the labor market, and environmental and community impact. The abatement we have now subsidizes developers and wealthy newcomers at the expense of long-term residents. Any fix worth enacting must go farther towards solving these problems. Any reform worth pursuing must level the playing field for rehab and reuse of Philadelphia's existing building stock, which is often better built, better-looking, and even more sustainable than new construction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I believe that now concludes the witness list. We will take a 10-minute break, and we will be right back to continue with the public meeting. Be right back.
Yes, sir. Can I just jump that? Jump it, right? We have to need another clamp on there. Okay, excellent. Alright, thanks. Now, one more question. Now, when the gas comes out, is the second floor heater hot enough now? Can we run without the gas?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're going to get started. Thank you, thank you all for your patience. We are back from our break slash recess in our public hearing. We will now go into our public meeting. And the chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson for a motion on Bill Number 190943.
Thank you, Council President. I move that Bill Number 19043 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of this bill at our next session of council.
Thank you. Any opposed? I'm sorry, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. It's been a long, long day, I'm sorry. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And this Bill Number 190943 will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation of suspension of the rules so as to permit consideration of this bill at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion on Bill Number 190944.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill Number 190944 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of this bill at our next session of council.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And Bill Number 190944 will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation and a suspension of the rules so as to permit consideration of the bill at our next session of council. This concludes the business of the committee. I want to thank you all very much.